Madam Clerk, please run the rule again.
Alderman Edwards.
Here.
Alderman Simpson.
Here.
Alderman Turner.
Here.
Alderman Lesko.
Here.
Alderman Canman.
Here.
Alderman Jobe.
Here.
Alderman McMinniman.
Here.
Alderman Tylin.
Here.
Alderman Dove.
Here.
Alderman Griffin.
Is there a motion to approve the February 11 Committee Minutes?
It's a move. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any against the motion carries? We have a special presentation tonight from Mr. Ted Dabrowski of the Illinois Policy Institute. The Illinois Policy Institute has completed a major research project involving the financial standing of the 100 largest municipalities throughout the state of Illinois and has compared the financial standing of those municipalities 12 years ago as compared to today, roughly today. And so, Mr. Dabrowski, please come forward. As we indicated, as we discussed, you've got roughly 10 minutes to make this presentation, and then the council can go to question and answer, and we can decide how much time the council wishes to devote to question and answer. Based on previous discussions, you've agreed to come back to the council if the council wishes to have more time in discussing the significance and meaning of your report. As a matter of our routine, we ask you to give your name and address for the record.
Sure. My name is Ted Dabrowski, and I'm with the Illinois Policy Institute. I'm the Vice President of Policy. Alderman, thank you very much for allowing me to be here, and for all of you allowing me to discuss what is a critical issue happening in Illinois. I think we're all aware of the state pension crisis. It gets news every single day in Illinois. We're starting to hear more and more about the Chicago pension crisis, which, in my view, has a worse pension situation than Illinois as a state. But there's a looming crisis which is going on everywhere throughout the state, and that's local pension crises. We're seeing the situation get worse and worse across the funds in the major cities and in some of the smaller cities in Illinois. And so, what we did is we undertook a study to look at that. Let me tell you four things that we did. We did not do a review of how well or poorly pension systems are funded. That's included, but that's not the purpose of this presentation. It's more of a holistic approach about what local pension systems and the stresses they are creating, what they're doing to city budgets, to taxpayers, to services, and in the end, the risk they're putting city workers who depend on those retirements. Another thing we did is we looked across time to make sure that we understand how these pension funds are doing over time. Our last thing we did is looking across the state so we can see which cities are doing well and which are not. Two important points before I continue. What we're seeing in this pension crisis across the nation, but specifically in Illinois because we seem to be the worst among the nation, within the nation, is it's really a lose-lose-lose for everybody so far. Taxpayers are losing because they keep putting more and more money into pension systems. City workers are losing because despite the fact that more money is going into pensions, the actual pension systems are getting worse. And third are the people who depend on core government services are getting less and less despite the fact that more is being put into the system. That's point number one. I think it's critical we all understand that. Nobody's winning in this match. The other point is that there's a lot of discussion about the employees, the city workers. The city workers have done nothing wrong. They are the beneficiaries of what I would say a great collective bargaining. But what we have to discuss going forward is what do benefits look like going forward so that the cities, budgets, the taxpayers, and the city workers are all well protected? So allow me to continue from there. If I have luck.
Do you have it on?
Okay, so what we did in this study is we studied the 114 largest cities in Illinois, and we used 10 different metrics to measure how the pensions were impacting the health of these largest cities. Cities would be the cities with more than 15,000 people that would have their own dedicated fire and police funds. Those would be the cities included. We used 10 different metrics, and I'll discuss those in a minute, but we wanted to do a holistic approach, not just look at the funding ratios, which tend to get a lot of attention, but to look at other factors. Each one of those metrics would get up to 10 points so that the total score for a city could be 100. So the metrics we did look at, and you have a copy of the reports there with you, we looked at 10 different metrics, and I just have seven up here. We did look at the funding ratios, of course, because that tells us how well the police, fire, and IMRF are funded. But we also looked at increases in taxpayer contributions. We looked at taxpayer contributions versus employee contributions. We looked at the percent of property taxes going to pensions. We looked at pension debt per household. Now, we looked at those kind of things over a 10-year time period, and that's how we noticed trends and what are the impacts there. Now, of the top 20 cities, Springfield came out worse. It only scored an 18 out of 100 in our scoring system. Springfield tied for 112th out of the 114 cities audited. And it was based on basically these different metrics that I mentioned here, not just the funding ratios, but all the impact this had on taxpayers, on the city budget, and then in the end, on the impact on the city services. This is the graphic of where Springfield ended, had a score of 18. Evanston and Joliet were nearby. They compare poorly compared to places like Naperville, Oaklawn, Bolingbrook. Bottom line is Springfield's performance was surprisingly very, very poor, and I'll show you a few reasons why. What's happened is that taxpayers now, compared to 10 years ago, compared to 10 years ago, taxpayers are now paying four times more into the employee pensions than the employees themselves. And that just means that as the system gets further and further behind, taxpayers are being called on, but in more and more. And so, now taxpayer contributions are over $25 million, where employee contributions are relatively stable at 6. And so, you're getting this bigger and bigger gap, and that means that more and more taxpayer money is going toward pensions and less towards other services. The pension debt, in the last decade, the pension debt has more than, basically doubled. That means that each household in Springfield is on the hook now for almost $7,000 per household to bail out the unfunded liability of the pension systems. Just 10 years ago, it was only $3,500. That $6,900 is one of the highest of all the cities that we measured. The percent of the city budget going to Springfield pensions is now almost a quarter. In 2003, it was less than 10%. So what we're seeing is, again, more and more of the budget being consumed by pensions and less available for infrastructure, public safety, library hours, and things like that. Another one is that it used to be that property taxes were used for paying pensions and other items in Springfield. But now, property taxes consume over 100%. All the money that goes into property taxes is now going into pensions, and that's still not enough. There's another 27% that needs to be found from other revenue sources in order to pay the pension cost. So what's happening is that these pensions are overwhelming city budgets and city services. One more important point to note is that Springfield, of course, is not a new city, and I realize that some newer cities have different dynamics. What's happening now in Springfield is that there are now more retirees, at least as of 2012, more retirees taking money out of the pension system than active workers to put in. So you've got an imbalance situation where you have more retirees than active workers, and that, of course, is going to continue to create more and more stress over time unless you have a big hiring spree to bring on new people. So these are the factors that are affecting, and these are the ones that have affected your score, Springfield's score. NY scored an 18 out of 100. When you look at the relative metrics compared to all the other 114 cities, Springfield tended to be at the bottom of just about everything with the exception of a couple of pieces. Now, here's the concerning part. Despite the fact that so much money from taxpayers and from employees is going into the pension systems, Springfield has some of the worst-funded pension systems in the state. The fire system is only funded 42%. That means that there's only $4 for every $10 it should have in the system to meet its future obligations for retirees. Police is less than 50% funded. And IMRF, which is often talked as the gold standard for funding, is only 62% funded. So the problem is that you've got a situation where so much money is being put into the pensions, and yet, if I were a retiree or a current worker, I'd be extremely concerned about the solvency of the pension system, extremely. You know, if these were private sector pension funds, they would be bankrupt already. So there's a huge risk right now that city workers at some point could face a risk of not seeing some of their pensions in the future. So the consequences, of course, I think we've seen what's happened in Springfield over the last seven, eight years. We've had the sales taxes more than double. You had a recent sales tax increase recently to cover expenses. You've had fees for roads, for sidewalks, for sewers. You've seen core city services cut, and if you look at the actual headcount of the city, perhaps we should be celebrating that you're being more efficient, but the question is whether you're a city, and not just Springfield, but cities around the state are having to reduce services because of pensions or because they find innovations and more efficiency. And I think the first is that pensions are forcing lots of layoffs and lots of reductions in positions. Public works has been reduced by 66 people. Library locations and hours have been cut, as well as positions. You, of course, know this much better than I do. The bottom line is that the situation is not sustainable. It's not sustainable, not just in Springfield, but throughout the state. And what we need to do is find real pension reform, and we can talk about that, but I know that many cities are advocating for pension reform. They need pension reform. The problem is that the state legislates what benefits should be and enforces the cities and villages to pay the benefits. And that's a broken system to begin with, and so I know that many of you would like to see that changed. But what we believe at the Illinois Policy Institute is we believe that we need real pension reform, and that means that cities should be able to budget with certainty. There shouldn't be a guessing game for each financial manager. And I've been amazed at how many financial managers I've talked to have the concern about having to increase fees or trying to avoid tax increases, having to cut people in order to make things work, and that's not how a city budget should be run. Likewise, city workers shouldn't be trapped in retirement systems that are becoming insolvent. And taxpayers need certainty, too. They've been putting more and more money into the pension systems, and they're seeing it not work in terms of the funding ratios of the pension systems, and they're getting less services. So with that, I just want to say that I live in Willmette, in the North Shore of Chicago, and this project came about because I happened to meet a person who gave me a report of Willmette that showed how a percentage of the budget that was being eaten up by pensions had gone up so much in 10 years. Willmette is a relatively wealthy district or village, and yet, that city is seeing more and more of its money going to pensions and less for infrastructure like sewage repairs that need to be done and alley repairs and things like that. So this isn't a Springfield problem. It's a statewide problem, but it is acute here in Springfield, which is a reason why I thank you for letting me open here, because I think this is a problem that needs attention, needs attention of the taxpayers, it needs attention of the city workers, and it definitely needs attention, of course, of you all who I know are deeply engaged in this subject. So I'd be happy to answer any questions from here.
Thank you, Mr. Dabrowski. We can go around the horseshoe, starting with Alderman Griffin.
Couple things here on that. The one you had up there, where it really looks like, I mean, we were going along somewhat stable, and then about 2000, 2001, things really started to climb on that chart. My guess is a lot of that, since a lot of it derives us, is the police and fire unfunded liability, and since all the sweeteners were given by the legislature after 9/11, that's probably driven a lot of that. The other thing is the unfunded liability, like you say, that can't be fixed here. That's fixed at the State House if it's quote-unquote "fixed." And then, of course, that coupled with the economy dropping out and taking that assumed rate of return and having to drop that in our assumptions, it's really increased the unfunded liability. So I mean, those two things coming together is a perfect storm of more benefits being done where we are actually, I mean, that whole unfunded liability, I know that's just a magic, not a trick, but you know what I'm saying? It's just a guess based upon what we're going to get on those returns and things like that. And so, that has exacerbated that formula. And again, I went right to, I got your stuff today, and I tried. I didn't have time to read everything brought to back, but I did go through and I went right to 22 because of solutions. And again, none of that's easy. Again, one thing, first thing, basically, the three things that we were going to do here, or at least that are proposed by Illinois Policy Institute, is opening up all the union contracts and renegotiating the levels of benefits and wages.
Very difficult.
That's, I imagine, a few people in this audience that are here to make sure that's not what we're here to talk about tonight. And then, again, reforming services is great, more efficiency, things like this. But I mean, you basically say here over and over, and I agree with you, is the General Assembly is going to drive what's going to happen. We've been around here, and you know, I know Joe's been the biggest proponent of pensions and the problems that are accruing about pensions all the time here, and I think all 10 people around here understand 100% of this pension problem that is looming. And again, with this economy the way it is, it's not going away, but we're looking for some realistic ideas or things that can be done from ourselves or things that we can look at that really would have a problem. And there doesn't seem to be anything coming forward.
So I think a big part of what has to happen is a great coalition of mayors and trustees throughout the state to demand reform. You know, I think right now, Chicago's getting a lot of attention, and maybe that's a correct thing. It needs a lot of attention. But I would argue that Springfield and some other cities like Evanston and others demand just as much attention. And what we have to make sure is that Chicago's not getting all the attention, and Springfield and other cities are left to continue to try to abide by these very difficult parameters that you have to deal with. You're absolutely right, there's no easy solution, and I know that every trustee around the state who's managing, or Alderman, who's managing a city faces. What I think, the bigger issue is the taxpayers, and the public doesn't really know what's going on. I certainly, you know, I'm an informed policy person, but I had no idea that local pensions were like this until I mentioned I saw that one report from Willmette. And you know, if I'm a city worker, I'm appalled in many cases at what's happening in the fire and police funding ratios throughout the state. If I'm a taxpayer and I'm paying four times more or three times more than I was paying 10 years ago, and yet, the results continue to be even worse. People are starting to figure that out, and unfortunately, some of you who follow what's happening in Illinois broadly is that people are leaving the state, and people see this bill. This bill continues to rise if there's fewer and fewer taxpayers left to pay it. Something's going to happen. And so, I think the question's going to be whether we collectively, and I think it's really important, a coalition of mayors and Aldermen and trustees get together and demand from the legislators here in the General Assembly for real change. Otherwise, it's just going to keep crippling the city, and as I mentioned, it's a lose-lose-lose.
Well, the thing, again, the thing that really came out the other day was, who's currently doing this? Arizona?
Yes.
Justice fighting. It sure looks to me like, again, I'm not an attorney, you guys are, Illinois case looks exactly like Arizona's. Arizona's going to overturn that because these promises were made to these employers or the employees at the time they took the job. That was considered, that's why they took that job, based upon maybe not just the salary, but the benefits they would have in retirement, and that was a promise that we've made to these people, and we should stick by this.
Right, and I understand that. I think, you know, there's other arguments being made that, of course, that we should protect, and definitely we should protect anything that's been earned by a worker. There's absolutely no doubt about that. Protect benefits already earned. The question is, what do we do going forward? Can we change the formula or not? And the biggest issue is, I think Arizona, you know, Arizona's a different state, it's got different dynamics. I think the question for Illinois and for some of the cities here is what is affordable and what is doable. We clearly have seen bankruptcies now across the nation, from Cedar Falls in Rhode Island to Pritchard, Alabama, to now Detroit, where they tried waiting, 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 where eventually pensioners are going to get hit. In Pritchard, Alabama, they saw losses in their pensions by as much as 50%. With the kind of funding that we're seeing in many pensions in Illinois and in Springfield, it's not out of the question that there could be some form of insolvency in the pension system, system at a time.
All right, let's try to get some more questions in, if that's all right.
Oh, yeah.
Mr. Chair, I have a question, if you don't mind.
Repeat the question.
I would like the gentleman to, or someone, to answer the question for me. Where is the municipal league? Where do they come down on this? Don't we pay lots of the money to be members of the municipal league? Where are they on this issue? The gentleman talked about mayors and trustees of major cities getting together to form a coalition. What about the municipal league?
Okay, the question is, where is the Illinois Municipal League in all of this? And we pay our dues to the Illinois Municipal League like most municipalities do. Is there, briefly, can you state where they're at?
I can't speak for them, of course. There's quite a few positions. I think there's a lot of reform ideas out there. What I haven't seen is anything rise to the top from legislators, and so, whatever that means, there has to be a bigger effort to, and I can't speak for them, I'm sorry, but what needs to happen is a bigger effort to get some legislation up there that puts on real reform.
I just want to make a brief comment in response to Alderman Griffin. You know, we can talk about the sweeteners issued by the legislature, and we can talk about the loss of our fund values during the Great Recession, but here's the key point. Every other municipality in the state of Illinois faced those same two circumstances. But unfortunately, Springfield is in the worst shape, based on the study. So we have to reexamine, why did Springfield get to be in the worst shape of all these municipalities? And a part of it is our spending problem with our pay and benefits. And I know we've got a large component of employees here in this room today, but just consider this one statistic, we've got to keep this in mind, that the median household income in Sagamon County is about $50,000, but the median pay for our city employees is now approaching $75,000. And that's something that we need to take into consideration, understand and appreciate it. And that payroll comes out of the taxpayers' pockets. So that's my comment on it.
Chairman, I'm curious, Mr. Dabrowski, if you had a chance to meet with Mayor Houston and his Budget Director and his administration with this proposal prior to tonight?
I have not.
Was there a reason you hadn't met with the mayor? I mean, he has, he is the CEO of the city, and I'd be curious why this forum versus meeting with the mayor and his administration first.
This just got rolled out tonight, right?
Yeah, this is, so happy to meet with the mayor. I've had lots of discussions with different officials as I've tried to put this report together. You know, this report, and again, this report's not to single out Springfield, although interestingly enough, Springfield was the worst of the big cities. And since the General Assembly's here in Springfield, I think it's quite ironic that, you know, one of the lesser-performing pension systems is right here where they're setting state law. But I've talked to a lot of officials, I'm happy to have meetings. This document was not about one city, it's about the entire state. The entire state is going under a very similar situation, but Springfield is special because it is Springfield.
Mr.?
Are we going to continue around the horseshoe?
Yeah. And then, we can decide, Dr. McCarthy's got a few questions, and we can decide how much time we want to spend on this tonight after we go around the horseshoe. Want to keep going? We can. Otherwise, we can ask Mr. Dabrowski to come back on another evening. Alderman Canman?
Yes, you say the survey is of the biggest cities in Illinois, but the biggest city, the city of Chicago, is left out. Why is that?
Oh, we actually did a special study on them, and I would argue that they are, you might be happy to know that they're probably worse than Springfield. Chicago has, their fire funding ratios are 25%. They only have 25 cents of every dollar they should have invested to meet their future obligations. I'm not sure if I were a Chicago firefighter, what I would be thinking. The police is 30%. I may have them backwards, one is 25 and one is 30. Chicago households, including what they owe for Cook County, are on the hook for $63,000 each for pension debt and long-term debt. I started to think of what might happen if they start to raise taxes to try to take that money to fund pensions, because people can easily cross the border into Hammond, Indiana, or they can go to the surrounding counties and get out. So they're included, just not in this report, they have a special report.
I'm sorry, what were you saying? That who could get out and go to the surrounding counties?
People, people in Chicago. So people could just move right outside.
You mean if the property taxes get too high in Chicago?
Exactly. Yeah, because I think every solution that's being thrown out there is more property taxes. And if you look at what we've seen here, I know you haven't raised property taxes, but if you actually look at the amount of, how much property taxes have gone up, naturally, it's quite significant here.
Well, the rate of property taxes has not gone up, but the amount of revenue that is earned from the property taxes has increased every year.
Significantly.
But then, by the way, we do, there is some part of the property tax that goes to repay debt, so it's not 100% for pensions. But you stated that taxpayers are now paying four times more for employee pensions than the employees themselves. That's mostly police and fire, isn't it? If you took police and fire out, that ratio would be far lower for just IMRF.
I'd have to look at IMRF specifically. You know, IMRF payments have gone up quite a bit as well, just not, probably not as much as fire.
You mean the taxpayer payments?
The taxpayer payments, correct.
Versus the employee?
Correct.
Okay. And I just also want to point out that...
And I'm sorry to interrupt, and that information is in the paper, so it can be gleaned out of here.
But your recommendation is basically to, for future hires, to switch from a defined benefits to earn benefits.
To a defined contribution.
Contribution.
I think that eventually that has to happen. You know, how fast we can do it, how politically feasible is it? You know, in today's environment, it doesn't sound feasible. The state legislature did put a small 401K-style component into the most recent state bill. But you know, you've had places like Michigan converted all its new state employees to a 401K-style plan back in 1997. Alaska did the same thing in 2006. Rhode Island, which, of course, is having the big debates on their pensions, moved to a hybrid half pension, half 401K-style plan. And that's a huge move for a blue state that was Democrat-controlled.
Who did that?
Rhode Island. So they went for existing workers. This is the most, I think, the most assertive change, is they had the second-worst pension systems in the nation. And what they did is they took, for existing workers, they said, okay, you can keep going forward, you can have half of your benefits coming from a pension style and half your benefits coming from a 401K-style plan. And that, at least, is a move in the right direction. I think we're so far gone in our pension systems that I believe, and you know, somebody who manages the finances on a day-to-day basis might tend to agree a little bit more, they'd like to see more definition and certainty in what they budget. And you're only going to get that through a defined contribution.
Rhode Island did that for existing employees, but not for future employees?
For all.
For all?
Right, right. But the critical thing about Rhode Island is that instead of just doing for future, they actually reformed benefits going forward for existing employees.
You pointed out that Springfield is last on your list that you came up with based on your criteria, but I would note that the Wall Street Journal did an article on pensions in cities nationally in November, and they found that, well, the median spending on pensions among the country's 250 largest cities rose to 10% of general budgets in 2012, up from 7.75% in 2007, but the city of Springfield was way above that. We were spending, depending on how you measure it, either 20 or 25% of our operating budget on pensions. So our effort, the effort that the city of Springfield is putting forward towards pensions based on this national study is way higher, I mean, than, you know, most other larger cities.
So I would commend you on that, frankly, and it's the same thing that the people in Willmette told me, that they have been making their payments and putting more and more into pensions. The problem is, even though, despite those efforts, and despite the fact that taxpayers are sacrificing more and more of their money, the hole isn't being filled. And so, that's why I say it's a lose-lose. If you're a city worker and you see the money going in, but you still see a, you know, if they were to open up their savings, retirement savings account and see that more than half of the money is missing from there, they should be shocked.
Right, but up till now, no worker has not gotten a pension they were, they had earned, and it doesn't look like that's going to be the case, at least in the near future. I understand it's a long-term problem.
Right, and I think that's the issue, and it's a question of, again, how much more can you keep taxing and raising fees before people start to move right over, right outside the limits of Springfield, for example?
Thank you.
Alderman Lesko?
Did you use all the... Did you use all the, the employee pensions from CWLP to where the corporate fund? Or did you take into consideration that CWLP actually pays into the IMRF?
So, what we did, I should have mentioned this earlier, so what we did is we took all the information from the Department of Insurance and all the work that they've done to put together for the fire and police pensions. We took the exact data from IMRF, we got FOIA for that data to get their funding ratios and other data. We took data from your CAFRs and just compiled all public information that was available in order to create the information included here.
So, you didn't, you didn't figure it with those ratios, though?
So, just, okay, maybe, I'm not sure I understood your question.
Yeah, I think, I understand Alderman, Lesko's, we've got an enterprise, basically, you know, equivalent to a private company, City Water, Light and Power. And so, that skews the numbers somewhat for Springfield, because we've got additional IMRF debt that typically-
Eight million dollars.
Attributable, some attributable to City Water, Light and Power. But if you exclude that, that was, I think, an issue discussed in the Wall Street Journal article, we're still in the high, very high levels, even if you exclude the RMRF attributable to City Water, Light and Power.
Right. I can give that specific, I have to look at the numbers and see what was included, not included.
Also, for the cities that scored better than Springfield, where's, was there a, have they, have they scored like that recently? Has it been that way over the last 10 years? Is it a new development that has helped their scores, or something they've done?
If you look at page, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, no, go ahead.
If you look at page 10 of the report, you'll see that basically everybody suffered, and look, let's be real, the financial situation of stock markets affected every single pension fund across the world. So, all the, all the city pension funds, which of course are invested in the same markets that every 401K's invested in, have been hit by falling stock markets, of course, and they're all recovering. But if you look at every city, you know, even the high-scoring cities back in 2003, Palatine, for example, used to have a score of 82, it's dropped to 50. So, it's been a mix. And the reason why we did 10 measures is because some cities are doing a great job of actually spending the money to fund pensions, like you said. And so, we want to capture that in the numbers. Others are not spending the money, making it look like they're not spending that much taxpayer dollars, but then you can see in their funding ratios that they are getting way behind on their funding ratios. Others are laying off people, which is showing up in their number of active workers to retirees. So, you have to look at the whole thing holistically. That's why we're very, you know, we really like the structure of this report versus just looking at funding ratios, which is what people like to do.
Thank you.
Alderman Turner?
Just very briefly, because I know that there's, we've been on this for a while, but I think I do share Alderman Job's concern that you released a study saying that Springfield is the worst pension, in the worst pension situation in the city, in the state, but there was no attempt to speak with either the mayor or the budget director. And I think that we heard from Alderman Lesko's question that there is most likely some information that you were not privy to, or that, you know, you didn't even know to look for, that may impact those numbers significantly. So, I think that you do a disservice to the city without taking that extra step and ensuring that you have all of the information available. And just on another note, you know, as a city Alderman and a state of Illinois employee who has reached retirement eligibility, I've heard a lot of, from the Illinois Policy Institute about pension reform and your pension advocacy. But it does concern me that every study that I see that comes from you always reaches the same conclusion that we need to move to this, to a 401K-style defined contribution pension system. So, I, so I, it leads me to wonder, is that your conclusion? And you're doing your studies to reach that conclusion? And are you, is there something else out there that we're all missing? So, you know, I appreciate your advocacy on this issue, but I do want to just caution that there are other voices out there, there are other concerns that should be taken into consideration, and I don't think that we should immediately leap to this is the, you know, resolution to all of our problems.
Thank you, Alderman. I think just to address the first, the first point, we have just taken the public data that we have. We've tried to address for every single issue. We know that there are parts of the general funds that are dedicated to bond repayment and to special funds. We're very aware of that, and that was made, adjusted in every case where, where needed. Of course, looking at this paper now, I don't have the specifics of your case, but I will be happy to revert back to you on that. So, but I feel like we've done a pretty good job of capturing all those kind of issues. With regard to the second, you know, there's been lots of reforms tried in Illinois and in many states around the country. We have now over $4 trillion, and that's just a crazy number that I'm not sure I can or anybody can understand, in unfunded liabilities nationwide in state and local pensions. It's become unfathomable. What's interesting about this report, though, is we get away from the $4 trillion, we just talk about Springfield residents, Springfield families, Springfield workers. And regardless of what the solution set that I might be proposing, I'm not sure that we collectively are doing a good job. And I'm representing, I'm representing the people, you know, I'm a taxpayer, I'm a worker in Illinois, I have four children, I pay, I pay huge property taxes, and so I feel like I can talk about how this is affecting people's lives. Obviously, some people are more affected than others. But clearly, what I'm seeing is massive taxpayer contributions going up, 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 despite whatever we think we've done in Illinois to reform or not. We're seeing services cut, and I show those numbers of people being cut in Springfield. I don't think, I don't think this is a moment to try to, from my personal perspective, to critique solutions. I think we need to debate solutions. We need to be open about them. What's clear to me is that, that these defined benefit systems are nearly impossible to manage. And that's why nearly 85% of the private sector no longer uses defined benefit systems anymore. They're all defined contribution. Why? Because they can, they can be managed, they can be budgeted and planned. It's clear that it's not working for your, for your people and for your workers. And, and again, Alderman, with all due respect, I think the city workers should be demanding big changes right now in order to protect their pensions, because they don't, they're not, they're not going in the right direction.
And with all due respect, I believe that you cannot critique solu, you have to debate as well as critique solutions simultaneously. You can't do one in deference to the other.
Okay, I'm sorry, I won't disagree with you. I think that this solution should be debated absolutely.
I think that's what you just said, so we'll agree to move on.
Okay.
Alderman Turner?
Yeah, I'm just, I'm curious about the report, because I think we're all interested up here, but was this done on a per capita basis? Or was it done on, this is Springfield, this is Bloomington, this is?
So, it's done on a household basis, where we take taxes, we look at households.
Okay, because when you do a ratio, let's say you have X amount of firefighters, and I remember this, X amount of firefighters per 1,000 people. If you take a city that says, we have two firefighters per 1,000 people, and another community has 1,000, or one firefighter per, your report is not going to be the same as it would be if you said, look, this is based on the comparison of these cities. So, when you make a statement to us that you've laid people off, you know, that, maybe that's because we felt we had too many, not necessarily felt that we, and when you do that, and when you look at it, now your, now your per capita ratio comes into play. So, on your report here, what I'd really like to see is a per capita ratio from, what'd you say your city was?
Willmet.
Willmet. I'd love to see a per ratio employee count per Willmet. I'd love to see a per employee ratio of Bloomington, then a breakdown of the dollar. Because if you just take a city and put it like this, and then try and make sense of the numbers, for example, very good observation by my colleague down here, CWLP. Name me one other city in the city, in the state of Illinois that has a electric company that owns one. I don't even know if there is one, is there? We're there by ourselves in that category, and that will have an impact on that per capita number if you don't set that aside. So, I look at this and I go, yeah, that's interesting, but if you don't do it per capita and then lay this out, I can make anything look bad. I'm not suggesting that we're not in kind of shape you're saying, but what I may, I'm saying is if you looked at the per capita, you said, okay, take Bloomington, normal X, and you can go there and look at that, and they have X amount of firefighters, go to Springfield, they have X amount of firefighters, go to Decatur, and say they have X amount of firefighters, and do your ratios, then let's see how that ratio fits out in their pension plan.
I'm going to jump in here and just give a brief answer, excuse me, but, you know, we had City Water, Light and Power 10 years ago. And so, we're comparing what Springfield did with City Water Power in the picture 10 years ago to what we are doing today. And what we, the report says has been a serious erosion of Springfield's financial, financial condition.
So, well, that's one aspect, and I understand that, but I'm saying ratios. If you understand the dynamics of ratios in your equation, and you don't use that, you can flaw your analysis here. And I'm not saying that pensions aren't in terrible shape. But let's say, we say to ourselves, you know what? We like police protection. We like fire protection. We like to pay for those extra people. That's what our constituents want. Well, if you're paying for more than, say, somebody else's, that's not what our, what we like, then we are going to be paying more for pensions, we are going to be paying more of a cost. Those are the decisions that have to be made by the community. What are your priorities, and where do you want to spend your money? So, I'd really like to see, if you can do it, a per capita ratio, and then, I'd like to have that information back, so we can see it on a chart. I think that'd be great. The other thing is, is cities deal with silliness out of the State House. And let me, let me give you an example, since you're up north. There's a House bill working its way through the system, House Bill 5485, and it's being put forth by a guy by the name of Mayfield from Waukegan. Are you familiar with that?
I am not.
Okay. Well, here's the silliness that's going on. What he's proposing is that an arbitrator, who's neither a taxpayer or lives in that community, is the guy that's going to set how many firefighters must be employed by that taxing body to man that shift. Now, how ridiculous is that? When we're trying to solve pension programs, and we got legislation like that coming out of the State House, it's going to tell us how to dictate our money? You can't, you can't figure that out. You can't deal with that. That is a huge issue for us to stop. And the sweeteners that are coming out, we'll have to deal with. We understand, everybody up here understands the pension crisis. We're struggling with the solutions, but about the time we come up with a solution, then we get a House bill like this, it's absolutely ridiculous. It takes the legislative power, the management power, out of anybody's hands and says, this is what you will do. And you, you want to have a ratio like that, but, and then I'll stop. But I think if we, if you can get back to me on a per capita ratio, and then compare us to the other cities, I'd really be interested in seeing that.
Thank you, Alderman. Let me just, if I can, address the three points that I heard. I would love to do this in a more detailed manner. I would love to not be the one that had to kind of try to, it took a lot of work to grab everybody's CAFRs, every, a DOI report, IMRF FOIAs, and gather all this stuff and put it together. And I would love to do exactly what you're saying, much more professional, deeper and deeper and deeper analysis. But the problem is, is that, and I'm going to hit to your third point, is that the way the state runs is not very transparent, and we know that. Makes it very difficult for taxpayers to really know what's going on. That's why I'm excited to put up some of these slides, because most people don't know what's going on. It's impossible to get this kind of data and manage it to perfection. So, along with what you're saying is, is we need more transparency and better, better reporting of all these things, so that, so that watchdog groups and research and education groups like us don't have to go in there and dig it out. It should be more readily available. But to your third point about, about the state laws that are being passed, and this, Alderman Turner, I think this addresses a little bit of why we believe that the defined contribution system is so much better. We don't tend to get good laws coming out of, out of the General Assembly. They have not been favorable laws for workers. There might be lots of promises and sweeteners, but if we look at the funding ratios, we see they're not working. The money's not there. They're either broken promises, or I don't know what you want to call them, but the money's not there. And so, rather than continue to listen to these broken promises, we believe that workers should have control over their own retirements. They should control, they should own their retirement accounts, and not have some account that's some black box somewhere that's half-empty, and nobody knows if the money's there or not, and what further laws are going to diminish the value of pensions. And so, we believe that a defined contribution system finally would give the budget directors and the city leaders confidence in what the budget is. Number two, taxpayers would know they don't have to bail out a system all the time, because they know that the amount they paid in is the amount that's being contributed to the workers. But most importantly, workers would know that what's in their account is theirs, it's portable, they can take it wherever they go, and nobody can take it from them, because it's legally their money.
Okay, point, Willmet, I, we've got two more questions at least.
I'm sorry.
Alderman Tyler wants to ask a question. Alderman Lesko wants to ask a question. I also believe Director McCarty wishes to ask a couple of questions. So, let's try to make the questions brief and the answers as brief as possible, because we've got lots of work to do tonight, and we have quite a number of citizens here and workers that have, are interested in other, in ordinances.
I'll keep my answer short.
Two things. One, I would like to say that in, in this situation of comparing the municipalities to the state, there's one glaring difference, and I, as a state employee, I, I can definitely say that I'm angry about the difference. To my knowledge, I don't know of a single municipality that missed a payment or took money that was supposed to go into the pensions and put it elsewhere. Municipalities have never missed a payment. The State House took money that should have gone into pensions and spent it elsewhere, because that was just what they felt like doing that year. Secondly, one of the things that I'm not seeing in your report is a list of the sweeteners, starting with 2001, or other legislation that has affected the retirements. A analysis of how much it's affected it, kind of showing that if, if they hadn't stuck their nose in, where would we be? Just to get their attention. And then, a third, a second analysis of if we manage to get these things reversed, because obviously, one thing is not going to solve this. You can't raise enough taxes to fix this. You can't cut enough laws to fix this. You can't do one thing. The point simply is, is an analysis of if they removed these sweeteners and fixed what they screwed up, where would we be going forward? What would be left? And those are the things that I'm not seeing. I'm seeing a lot of, and don't take offense, I'm seeing a lot of bell ringing, but I'm not seeing a whole lot of anything other than, as Alderman Turner said, the suggestion to go to a 401K.
Okay. I appreciate that, and I understand your comments about the requirements of municipalities to make their payments versus the state has a lot more flexibility, so that, I think that's appreciated by everybody. The problem with this kind of report is we could keep adding more and more, we'll find it difficult. I think my first goal, I think, look, we can say we all know this problem, and we can say it again and again, but nobody seems to do anything about it. So, I'm, I'm not convinced that taxpayers really understand. I know you all do, because you live it every day.
Right, but that's why I'm saying, if you had a report of listing the things that they've done to the pensions, and what, what they've burdened the municipalities with in the last, say, go back just to 2000, and then you turn around and show analytically what it's done, so that people could look at it and go, oh my God, look at this, it tripled the amount of where they'd be. And then you turn around and show going forward, if you put pressure on the legislator to fix this, this is how much closer we'll be, and we won't have this big of a problem.
Alderman, I totally agree with you, let me put it that way. This is our first stage, just saying, here's the problem, it's really bad, taxpayers, city workers, everybody, here's how bad the numbers are, let's all get engaged, and let's all get involved in the discussion.
Well, I'll be honest with you, as a taxpayer, I don't want to turn around and throw more money at it to have those idiots make it worse again.
Thank you.
Alderman Lesko?
Not to be critical, but I think for your report, before you come to us, you really need to get with the administration. need to get with the administration and talk to them. CWLP made a payment of $7.8 million this year, but I don't think you took into consideration the $330 million revenue. So I caution you to get a, to get a Chicken Little mentality going on with people here in Springfield. Let's get the facts down. I ask you to, to get with the administration.
I'm happy, I'm happy to do so.
Yeah, and then bring us back and accurate report. Thank you.
Well, again, let's give Director McCarty a chance, because he hasn't had a chance yet.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to say thank you for coming and sharing your concern, sharing your report. We've been talking about this for a couple of years. We all know in the city that we need to be watching our pensions, we need to be concerned about them, and we need to be working on solutions. We also all agree that today, the real solutions lie with the Illinois General Assembly. We do what we can do here, and we have done a lot of the things that you've listed on page 22 for your solution for municipal. We've looked at headcount reductions, we've looked at eliminating sweeteners, we've looked at becoming more efficient, all those things you've listed, we're doing. So we're happy to see that you're in agreement with the approach that we're taking here in the city of Springfield. I have just a couple of quick questions on your case study here, and we'll, and I'll try to be as brief as possible. On page three, you mentioned that property taxes have skyrocketed because they are primarily the funding source for municipal pension funds. I just wanted to point out, in the city of Springfield, our property tax rate has not increased in 30 years.
I think that was Aston covered?
Yes, I know, I'm just pointing something out. Our appreciation, because it speaks to something a little later than I'm gonna get.
Could I respond to that, or you want me to wait?
If you might, wouldn't mind just waiting, you know, I'll just, I'm gonna be as brief as possible.
Sure.
You know, our, our property appreciation and our development is what, what's really increased our property tax rates. Now, directly to the case study, you talked about in their large increases in the city's operating budget and higher taxes have not provided relief. What taxes are you referring to? The only taxes that have been increased since FY 2009 all went to infrastructure on the corporate side. Some rates went to CWLP, and it was, there were sales tax increases and motel, motel tax increases for infrastructure, but there have been no operating tax increases, I think, since the telecom tax was increased around FY 09, something in that timeframe. So I'm just curious what taxes you're referring to.
Well, we have the, from, from your own CAFR, we have a list of all the general fund property tax revenues, of course, all the contributions that have been made by taxpayers and by employees. We have your budgets, we have your unfunded liability, we have all the data that comes from there, so all that data is built from that.
Okay. So when we get into our one-on-one conversation, perhaps we can have that data, because I'm not quite sure what taxes you're referring to. And the biggest thing that I want to talk about is something that Alderman Lesko's already brought up. If you look at page five, and this answers your question, Alderman, you look at page five, tapped-out taxpayers, it refers to $28 million in 2012. That indeed does include all of our IMRF payments, approximately $9.9 million. Of that, approximately $8 million comes from enterprise operations, including CWLP. Now, if you're going to include expenses from enterprise operations, pension expenses, then you should be including the revenues from those operations as well, or, and/or you should exclude those from the analysis. And that really does affect some of the percentages and some of the charts later on, and I think page 19 is an example of that. But you mentioned in your presentation that we have roughly 23% of our budget goes towards our pension payments. If you remove the enterprise operations, that number's 18%, give or take. So it certainly does skew the data.
I'm certainly happy to discuss those numbers in detail with you. As I've mentioned, if things were easier to read and understand...
Sure, no, and I understand that, and we'll get to that. Page six, the chart at the bottom, I'm curious about your tripling of general fund property taxes. I'm not sure where that number comes from. In FY 98, we had 12.6 million in property taxes. Today, we have around 20 to 21 million. So I'm not, I'm curious where the trip...
Again, I'm happy, I'm happy to share every one of those numbers that come directly from our, from, from the CAFR, so...
Okay.
For the pension reports.
Next page. Crumbling pensions. You mentioned that both police and fire are both under 50% funded. The data I have shows that police, that that is indeed true for fire, but for police, that we have never been under 50% funded, so that's something I'd like to see your data on that.
These are straight from the DOI, so I understand that cities have other numbers that they're used, but I think everybody's going to DOI, eventually, correct?
And the last thing is that page 19, just as an example of how the numbers can, can be skewed, on page 19, your scoring sheet metric number eight. City of Springfield, you have this...
I'm sorry, which, which page?
Page 19, metric eight.
Okay.
You have the city of Springfield is contributing 127% of its property taxes, and this just reiterates what Alderman Lesko brought up. That number includes the expenses being paid by ratepayers of about $8 million. So if you were to take that out of it, we would not be number one, we would be somewhere in the three to four range, if my calculations are right.
What does the 127, according to your calculations, go to?
Well, you have around 28 million is what you listed earlier. Our property tax is around 20 or 21 million, so that would get you right around that 28 million number that you listed earlier. But again, the 28 million number includes all our enterprise operations as well. Something we would never use to pay, never use property taxes to pay for.
Happy to discuss that more.
Okay, that's all I have. Thank you.
Just if I could just make one reference to the, to the property taxes, so it's just very important. I understand that tax rates haven't gone up, but this is a situation we saw across the state, as property values skyrocketed, more and more taxpayer dollars did go to fund cities, and of course, that's why in, in many areas, they were, they passed property tax extension limitation laws. So, so obviously, despite the fact that rates didn't go up, in many places, tax revenues did go up significantly, and those were taxpayer dollars.
All right, I think we've got one more question from Alderman, no?
Well, it's not a question, but I mean, I appreciate your report, and I, I afford to read and through it, I was unable to because of work today, but I think one thing, too, it's surprising yet not surprising that Springfield be towards the bottom, mainly because what comes with being a state capital is also the fact of, of you have state buildings, et cetera, which are all exempt from the property tax. I think the number of exemptions that we have, considering on the, the ratio of the amount of state properties we have and the exemptions we have from properties, is a huge liability that none of the other cities have, and I think that that's...
Interesting, Evanston, Evanston does as well, a lot of the university property tax exempt.
But I think, I mean, I think that's, that actually runs a huge...
Agreed.
...addition to this as well, so, but I appreciate your report, and I'll, I'll look forward to, to reading through it more in depth.
Thank you very much, Mr. Dabrowski, for covering all this distance to roll out a, a major report, and I think you've tried to show the big picture and show the, the trend, and that's what we have to focus on, so thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Chairman McMiniman, I do know that Roger Griffiths is in the audience, and he did say that he would like to speak tonight.
On this subject?
Yes.
If, if the council's okay with that?
Absolutely.
Absolutely. Mr. Rogers, do you wish to... Mr. Griffin?
Actually, I'm Jeff Bigelow, Regional Director for Aston, Council 31. Roger is not in the city right now, and he asked me to come here, stop by to listen to this presentation. And of course, like, like all of you, we are just getting this report, just trying to digest it, and like many of you, like almost everybody here, we had many of the same questions. We thought that your questions today were, what pointed in the right direction and revealed a lot of fundamental flaws in the, in the report. The Illinois Policy Institute has asked that we, that a grand coalition be developed of all the municipalities, of the trustees, of the, of the aldermen around the state, in order to do what? In order to reform pensions. But what do they mean by this word, reform? Reform has so, has gone through so many transformations, and in essence, what they mean in this context is that they want, he wants to impose wage theft or pension theft on the people of Springfield. And frankly, I don't mean simply the, the workers of Springfield, whose pensions would be affected by their proposals, but all the retirees in, in the city of Springfield, whose pensions are gonna be affected by this, affect the entire economy of Springfield, so really, it's everybody. He says he wants to free the employees who are trapped by the pension systems as they exist right now. Free them to do what? Freedom to be where? He wants them to be in the 401K land of, Neverland, of not knowing what your pension was gonna be, not knowing what is gonna happen to your security in retirement, because you're at the whim of the marketplace. And everybody knows, one of the reasons that the pension funds are in the condition they are now is because of the crisis that occurred from 2008 to 2010, or continuing for many of us today. And that crisis is something that our people cannot afford. As a number of people mentioned, we have services that are provided in this city, critical, vital services that are provided. Police and fire are obvious services that are mentioned, but I want to also highlight that the highway workers who are here today, who spent hours and hours out on the road in sub-zero temperatures with snow piling up and trying to clear the road for the citizens of Springfield. That's a vital service for people. The library is a vital service for people. All the clerical employees who bring every department in this city to life, without them, they could, nothing would happen. And what kind of pension do they get for this? Even according to IMF, IMF statistics, somebody who works for 22 years, retiring at age 62, gets a, and had a wage of $42,000 at the end of that time period, gets a pension of around $17,000 a year. They're not rich high off the hog, but that's part of the guarantee. It's part of, I came to work here for the city, I believe in the city, I want to contribute to the city, I want to provide services to the city, is part of the pension, part of the promise, and we believe quite firmly that pensions are a promise, and that they can't be changed, and it's unconstitutional to try to do so. I think that many people here pointed out quite accurately, as I did, I went to the, to their page, you know, first, you know, what's the, the solution that they're proposing? Open up the contracts. Cut wages, cut benefits. That was proposal number one. Believe me, that's not gonna happen. It's not gonna happen. We, we don't, we're not for cutting wages, not for cutting benefits, we're not for a race to the bottom here, for our employees or for the citizens of Springfield. They want to do away with defined benefit pensions and go into the 401K. They want to, to change everything, and change it for the works. So we believe that, I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to speak, we, I want to thank you for your comments that, that highlighted the flaws, the fundamental flaws in this so-called study, and, and I'm glad you weren't mesmerized by a lot of facts, figures, and fancy footwork on the, in the projection, because it sort of reminds me really of a saying one time that, that came up about liar, that figures don't lie, but liars sure can figure. And so when they want a result, they want a particular result, they, they engineer a study to come up with that result, and I think that's what happened here today. Thank you.
Mr. Bigelow?
Yes, sir.
Could I ask you a couple of...
Very briefly, because we offered, we don't want to get into another debate here, let's just, thank you for your information and for your response.
Yeah, a couple, very quickly. One, I mean, Mr. Dabrowski reported to be presenting or speaking on behalf of the workers, but you're actually the official representative of the union.
That's correct.
Now, the other thing is, isn't, didn't IMRF, I thought I heard there, it's had report just recently that last year they had like record returns?
20%. 20% return, and I think that's a very good point, that here, the, even though our report says, over time, that the IMF can be reestablished to be a healthy fund, a healthy and funded pension fund, so why would you want to mess with it? And just, as you said, just last year, 20% return. They're on the road to recovery, so why are you gonna mess with that?
Thank you.
I'd like to comment.
Alderman Tyler?
Jeff, I'd like to thank you and the employees who came tonight. You sat through a presentation that I'm sure you didn't agree with. You did not disrupt, you were respectful, and you sat through the whole thing and listened to what they had to say. I'm a little bit disappointed to see that halfway through what you were saying, Mr. Dabrowski found it, you go out.
I think he might have a flight to, to get back.
But he's still out there. I'm just a little bit disappointed that he didn't listen to your response, so I would just like to acknowledge that I noticed.
Thank you, Chris.
Chairman, I, I, I'm not certain, I, Alderman McMiniman, with all due respect, I, I understand your passion for pension reform, I'm just not certain this decisiveness of putting our public employees in this forum tonight is the way to solve a major problem. This can be, we can all sit around a table and, and bring ideas and solutions, but let's be honest, this report, I find it unfathomable that you would not, or the Illinois Policy Institute would not sit down with our mayor and our budget director prior to, and I, I assume you were fully aware of this report leading into today.
They, the Illinois Policy Institute rolled out the report tonight. It's no different than Mr. McCarty, given the administration point of view on finances, and none of us get that report ahead of time. I, and I, I think every alderman got a copy of this report last night, and so, and as far as putting our employees in a difficult position, the point is...
Because I requested it. You were gonna share that report until I requested it, and Mr. McCarty is our budget director, the Illinois Policy Institute is a lobbying organization. He's our budget director.
The point is, it was shared, and I got it Friday, at the end of the day, Friday.
But the point is, we're not, you know, we, we've got our taxpayers, that, we've got
117,000 residents of Springfield, and this isn't just a, a debate about our employees only, and it's about our taxpayers too. And we all represent our taxpayers, and we've got a report here that shows that our taxpayers are deeper in the hole, much deeper in the hole than they were 10 years ago. Now, we can recognize the problem, or we can play the blame game, oh, it's the legislature, but every municipality's got a problem with the legislature, but Springfield is the city where our combined police and fire pension debt rose from $50 million 10 years ago to $200 million currently. That's Springfield's problem, and we can sit around here and say, well, let's just, you know, under, let's undercut every minutia of that report, find some minutia of the problem, or we can look at the big picture, and that's what we're elected to do here. And as far as, we never miss a payment. Let's examine that statement. We have missed payments, and how do we have missed payments? We've missed payments to our pensions, because for 10 years, we, as the city council and the administration, said, let's calculate our contribution to the pensions based on an expected rate of return of the monies that were set aside at 7.5%, but during that 10-year period, our actual rate of return was about 6%. So we kept getting deeper and deeper in the hole, and we played that game, and that, those premises based on unreality. And so let's get realistic, and let's admit to the problem. I haven't heard this administration in three years say we've got one of the most serious pension problems in the state of Illinois. Never. So we can just sit around here and, and, you know, accuse McMiniman of barraging the, the city council. Well, I'm not going away. I got a year left, and someone has to focus on this problem.
But Joe, you said you got the report Friday. Is that because they did the research and knew you were chairing this meeting tonight, or did you ask them to come here and bring us?
I asked them to come here and bring it to us. You bet I did.
Okay.
And I hope you're grateful I came, Alderman Griffin.
Oh, I am, I'm, I'm grateful for any...
Because you've been concerned about pensions yourself.
I'm 100%.
So let's get an outside point of view on this, and not just get it from the administration, and I hope everyone recognizes that.
But I think that we're all concerned about the pension problem. I don't think that you can say that you're the only person here concerned about the pension problem, but what I will say, I don't know that we should get all up in arms and decide...
Well, I got accused of kind of being inappropriate.
Can I finish talking, please?
I got accused.
Can I finish speaking?
And I've been accused before.
Can I finish speaking?
Yes, please.
Thank you. I don't think that we should grab this report and start waving it around like it's the end-all-be-all, when we all know that it's flawed, and it does not contain all of the relevant information in order to arrive at the, to arrive at the conclusions that, that it should. It, it doesn't give a complete picture. So why should we grab it and start running with it when it doesn't give a complete picture? And I do think that if they had taken the, the opportunity to have a conversation with the mayor, have a conversation with the budget director, have a conversation with other interested stakeholders within the city, they would have that, they would have that information, and I think that they were remiss in not doing that. And I do think that it puts all of us, it puts us as aldermen, it puts its city employees, it puts the administration in a difficult situation when these types of things happen. And, and I will say, Joe, I know that you have a strong passion for the pension problem. We all have a passion about something. However, you can't just come in every week and yell and scream and wave and raise your voice about it without at some point offering some solution to put forward. And I will say that there have been other aldermen that have talked with you about solutions, and have talked to you about ways to... solutions and have talked to you about ways to move this forward. But I never see any opportunity to say, "Let's, let's sit down and meet about it. Let's put forth, let's put forth an ordinance to address it." I never see any of that. All I see is this on talk radio, on TV, in here yelling and screaming about it. So can we all just take a deep breath, sit back and say, "Let's get together and work on a meaningful solution and bring forward some type of ordinance that we can work through with the administration and with the employees, with the employee unions? And we can all sit down and say, 'Let's work towards a solution that's powerful to both for everybody.'" I think that's a reasonable, rational, intelligent thing to do.
Well, I'm just going to say, I, I think you vote the way you see things. And so I think, not to show any disrespect for our, our city employees, but I voted, and I will continue to vote against pay raises for our non-union employees and our union employees. And just like, you know, as far as reasonable amendments and ordinances, I've got one on here tonight that says the city council should decide whether we give 3% raises to our non-union employees. It shouldn't be by executive order. And we cannot continue to give pay raises, give pay raises to both non-union and union when we keep borrowing from our pension funds to do it. We've got to make a choice. Either you can have a very large pay currently, or you can have a very strong pension later, but we can't afford both. And so I'm going to keep vote, not just talking about it, but voting for it. And so it's been 24 collective bargaining agreements, no's from Alderman McMiniman. And so it's not just talk, Alderman Turner.
Yes, it is. With a vote no on a, a lone vote no on a collective bargaining agreement is talk. Getting together with other Aldermen to put forth a meaningful amendment, a meaningful ordinance that can be debated, discussed, amended if necessary, and passed that will make an impact on the problem is action. Anything else is not.
Well, action tonight was hearing a different point of view. And I don't think any, any of the other nine would have brought that other point of view to the council. And I appreciate Mr. Dabrowski speaking tonight. So any more comments, any of that, Alderman Edwards?
Yeah, I, I kind of agree with Doris a little bit here. I hear us talk about pensions, pensions. I mean, I've, I've tried to give you a suggestion that when we get a bond payment done, redirect the money that we've been paying toward the pension funds. And as we do that, as bonds expire, that kind of puts a noose on everybody because it's no more money to go invent this program or that program or a new program over here. That means that money's being redirected to pension funds to help support the pension funds. We need to talk about that, and I understand that. But we can't just sit and that mean the main focus without coming up with ideas. I thought that was a reasonable idea because it doesn't raise taxes, it doesn't put any hardship on anybody's program, it's money we're already spending for something else. It's redirected toward pension funds. And we pay a lot of money in bonding. We just had one expire either this year or last year that was about $900,000 that could have been redirected. Had we have talked about it, had there been an ordinance in place, and had we, as Aldermen, said, "You know what? We're not going to have any new programs till we get this stuff under writ." It's more than just voting no for races and then pointing to the rest of us, say, "I'm concerned about pensions and you're not because of my votes." So I, I think we can do better than what we're doing, but we have to do as a collective group. One person can't do it by themselves. And I think we can get there. We've been down this road as employees and as a city before. And I'll use our healthcare budget as an example. It was an absolute shambles. We didn't know how we were going to pay our bills. We were 60 to 90 days behind on paying our bills. The employees got together with management, with unions, with elected officials, and it took about five, six years, but we got it back in the black because we worked together and we didn't point a finger. We didn't say it was your fault or our fault. We worked together. And that's how we're going to get out of this mess, is by working together and not pointing fingers at each other. So...
I completely agree with that. And I apologize if I was pointing my fingers at anybody. I'm just trying to advocate for the taxpayers and for our residents and, and define a problem. So if there's no more on that, we'll move to ordinances tabled or remaining committee, and I'll just read them off. We've got 2011-104, 2012-123, and these are all 2012, 226, 376, 128, 170, and now moving to 2013, 128, 174, 193, 250, 260, 266, 376, 397, 457, 469, 470, 022, 024, 058, and 059. And I just wanted to recognize, we've had a number of city employees leave tonight, and I want to acknowledge the great respect that our city employees gave this dialogue. Very respectful to everyone here, and I appreciate it. Now we're going to ordinances for committee consideration, and we've got 2014-068. Madam Clerk.
2014-068 is the annual appropriation ordinance of the city of Springfield, Illinois for the fiscal year beginning March 1, 2014 and ending February 28, 2015.
Move to debate.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second to go to debate. Are there discussion items and amendments to be offered?
We have an amendment to put forward, amendment one.
Does someone wish to describe amendment one?
Yes, I'll describe the amendment. Amendment one, co-sponsored by Alderman Edwards, Simpson, Turner, Jobe, and Griffin. And Alderman Kahnman would like to be added as a co-sponsor on amendment one. Would move 50,000, you have the, you have the information in front of you, Alderman, out of fund number one, agency 107, line 107 and 102, and move to the city council budget. The intent on amendment number one and amendment number two that we'll discuss will be to move that money to the city council budget to further explore options for an inspector general position, or inspector general.
Is that a motion?
That's a motion.
I'll second it.
Just a question, Alderman Jobe.
Yes.
And the intent would be that we'll work out the details as to how this inspector general position or, or, you know, something like that would be, would be carried out in the near future, is that correct?
That is correct.
So I do have another question. Would that mean that until the ordinance is filed detailing the position or detailing what the contractual person would be or be doing, does that mean the money cannot be spent until such a time as we have that ordinance?
Correct. After we pass the budget, we'll be coming forward with an ordinance in the next few weeks.
So this is an amendment to put money aside in the city council's budget to be used later to fill a position that'll be further described later by ordinance.
Correct.
Any more discussion? Are we going to do this by voice, vote, or do you want to...
You can vote on your machines.
Okay. All those in favor, vote your machine. And if you're against, vote your machine.
Just say yes.
It's not coming down.
There we go.
Alderman Simpson, do you wish to vote on this amendment?
I, yes.
Thank you. That would be 9-1.
Okay, 9-1. There's a, does anyone wish to offer a second amendment?
Yes, Chairman, I'd like to make a, a motion for amendment number two, sponsored, co-sponsored by Alderman Edwards, Simpson, Turner, Jobe, Griffin, and also add Alderman Kahnman as a co-sponsor. This money would be moved out of, from the mayor's office budget of 29,000, would be moved to the city council budget. The funds would be for the same position as described in amendment number one.
Second. It is a motion and a second for this amendment to move 29, to move funds from the mayor's budget to the city council coordinators' fund. Is everyone ready to vote? So vote your machines.
I vote yes.
9-1.
Does anyone wish to offer amendment, a third amendment?
Yes, I'll, Mr. Chair.
Yes, Alderman Simpson?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
I move to amend and propose appropriation ordinance by adding to the proposed ordinance amendment number three, as set forth in the document titled "Fiscal Year 2015 Amendment."
All right, there's a, is there a second for that motion for amendment number three?
Second.
There's a second from Alderman Turner. Any discussion?
Yeah, which one, which one is amendment, Chairman? There's two amendment threes. Which one is she? Hmm?
I only have one.
The second part is a continuation.
Oh, okay.
But Chairman McMiniman, I was wondering if Budget Director McCarty could explain amendment number three?
Sure. Be happy to, Alderman. Amendment number three is Alderman Simpson's request to remove approximately $268,000 from our fund balance or reserves, rainy day fund, whichever terminology you wish to use, and to move that over to the library in order to fund four additional positions in order to expand library hours by six hours per week.
Is the director of the library here, Ms. Huntley?
Yes.
At one time, the, the library was open till 9 o'clock, is that correct?
Yes, prior to 2000, I think, 2009, 2010, fiscal year 2000, we were open from 9 o'clock in the morning until 9:00 PM, four days a week, Monday through Thursday.
And what, how, what was the usage of, can you tell us what the usage was from the hours of, you know, 8 to 9 on those days?
I'm not sure that we have those kinds of statistics. We probably could get them. Anecdotally, I would say usage tends to drop off around 8:30 PM or so, about a half hour before closing. Definitely, we had meeting room users, groups, community groups using the meeting rooms till 8:30 or 9:00. And Monday, Wednesday, Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday were probably fairly busy for meeting rooms. Thursdays, we always reserve for library programs, so we didn't have as many meetings on Thursday evening.
Well, this drop off you described, you know, from 8:30 to 9:00, is that, you get the same kind of drop off now that you close at 8:00, from 7:30 to 8:00, or?
I don't really feel comfortable answering that without looking at the statistics, but generally, the last half hour is not as busy.
You mean whatever, even when you close at 6:00, 5:30?
Correct.
All right, thank you.
Any further discussion? I'd like to add a few comments on this one. I'm going to vote no for this spending proposal of 267, but I, if it, if it fails, I'm going to make a proposal to spend $150,000 instead of the 267. I want to, I did some research to, going back to when Mayor Houston came into office and we restored the, the hours for Sunday hours, four hours. And that, that was offered in June of 2011, and Mayor Houston brought a supplemental to this council. And to add four hours back then, to add four hours, the supplemental that Mayor Houston brought to this council, which was approved, was for $28,000. Now, an Alderman wants to add six hours to the library, an additional hour on Monday night, an additional hour on Tuesday night, additional hour on Wednesday night, and add three hours on Thursday, that's six hours. And the best the administration can tell us is, "Well, it's going to cost $267,000." There's just something that does, doesn't seem right about that. And I'm also, to be honest, Ald, Director Huntley, it seems like we should have been somehow thinking more outside the box with the proposal to increase hours, to, to think of ways to do it less expensively so that, and, you know, we've had a discussion about this and about the, for example, the Sagamon Room, which is almost like a, a room of, of our prayer precious books, but it's, it's not as frequently used, let's say, as the computer carols. And that room can be locked up, I mean, at 6 o'clock, 5 o'clock, 4 o'clock. We don't have to keep that open in the hours. That would free up at least one staff person. There's, there's ways to hire part-timers that we could put employees on overtime. So I don't really expect you to give a detailed answer to this. I'm just disappointed that the administration couldn't find a way to open it a few more hours without having to spend a quarter of a million dollars.
Let me just answer a couple of things. The Sunday hours that we were able to restore, those four hours, yes, it seems like the four hours are not costing as much as the six hours. The four hours are in addition to what our employees work every week. They work 37.5 hours. Those four hours are strict overtime. So we don't add any people to the, to, to open up those four hours on Sunday. We don't need additional people. We just add hours to our current employees. In order for us to open additional hours and to be open additional evening, we need more employees to cover those desks. And I think I provided some information to all of you about the number of man hours we need or staff hours we need to cover those desks. I, I lost a little bit of my train of thought there. So yes, there is a big difference. And my thought when we came here for our budget hearing, one of the concerns I heard from council was that we had fairly high overtime payments due to the shortage of security staff and due to Sundays. So we didn't really even consider, when we talked about additional hours, just putting money into our overtime budget. Yes, that would be cheaper. It would be much cheaper than hiring four new people. But I thought, I guess on one hand, I thought we were trying to keep our overtime costs low. We, are, the four people that we are recommending, that we believe we need to do this, it was in response to requests I had from Alderman about what it would take for us to open additional hours. And I guess, Alderman McMiniman, I, I apologize on behalf of my administration at the library that we aren't thinking outside the box. And I assume that's the administration that we're talking about. We, I think we are a little bit limited sometimes in what we can do with staff. We are under a union contract in terms of what kind of, how, the employees that we hire and what positions. And I'm not saying that's a bad thing, but it's a reality of life at the library. We also are very short-staffed. You've heard me say this, for those of you who've been here for a number of years, ever since 2009. And being that short of staff, we barely have time sometimes to be in the box, never mind to think outside of it. And I'm sorry that I'm getting a little emotional. It's very difficult for us to sit down and plan. We don't even have a long-range plan at the library. We need a long-range plan. We need to be thinking about the future, about what, what new services we can offer or how we can change services that we've been offering that maybe are no longer used. Alderman Griffin talked about this a little bit when we talked about our electronic resources. But we need to have... But we need to have staff, sufficient staff to do that, and we don't right now. And our staff, as I've said before, has been doing so many things that are not in their job descriptions, and never once do I have someone say to me on my staff, I won't do that, it's not my job. And every single person shelves books, and it, I just can't go, I can go on forever, I'm sorry. I'm dragging out the meeting, I'm just saying, this is a very difficult position that we have been in, that we have tried to provide the best service we can. And what I'm saying, in the best of my professional opinion, is that we cannot add more hours without additional people. And I guess that's, and, we didn't ask for additional people, we were asked to.
Sometimes you get to the, you know, the tipping point.
Mr. Chair, if I could, if I could ask a question?
Sorry.
Go ahead, Alderman Simpson.
Because, I, I, I guess I'm getting, and I have been getting conflicting information and statements from Director Huntley. Now, initially, she gave me a list of five positions that she thought were needed to extend the hours. Well, then, I came up with a figure based on that pulling out two, two full-time staff and a half-time security, which would be $144,000. Then she gets with McCarty, and she and McCarty talk, and all of a sudden, now, instead of $145,000 that, that she could have two additional staff and have security, now she needs five additional staff, otherwise, the, anything less than the five would only allow to maintain the current hour, hour, that, that the library has. So, I'm a little bit confused in terms of her ability to manage staff in a manner that would allow for the addition of two additional full-time library assistants, half-security, and I, I guess I'm not understanding why this would not work to allow extension of hours. You know, and, and, and you come before this council, this has been going on since we had budget hearings, and you, you seem to be up here in terms of the questions, you don't anticipate the questions that Alderman are answering in terms of managing the library such that you would be able to determine, you know, what, what could go, what could stay, to allow for the citizens to have extended hours. I guess I'm just a little bit confused about your management style.
Can I answer some, some of this, can I respond? When we originally were asked to submit a request for how much staff we would need to extend the hours, we worked on a plan that would bring us back to the hours we had in fiscal year 2010, which was opening up at nine each day and staying open till nine PM. After talking to staff and after some other conversations, I think, including one with Alderman Thailand, we decided that we could be open, we could do it with fewer people by not opening up in the morning, and only adding six hours to the week instead of 10 hours. And that's how we went from five on our original request to four. But at no time did I have a conversation with, with Director McCarty about the number of people that we needed. This was something that we did internally at the library.
Well, you know, according to emails that I've received from Mr. McCarty, he indicated that if he had a conversation with you, and the two, then we come up with a $268,000 figure. So, you never had a conversation with Mr. McCarty?
I, I may have had a conversation with Mr. McCarty, but what I did do was to forward him the same information that I forward to the Alderman. I don't, I really do not recall talking to him about the number of hours or the cost specifically, until I sent him the same documents that I sent to the Alderman. Bill, you can correct me if I'm wrong, I.
No, that's a correct statement. What she's referring to is, after that documentation was sent out, we met with you to figure out exactly where, what positions would have to be hired, how much it would cost, so that we could have the amendments ready to go, should they be requested.
Okay.
And that was a meeting actually with you, myself, and several members of my budget team.
Okay, I do recall that meeting, thank you.
Alderman, we're gonna go to Alderman Edwards, Alderman Simpson, if you have more questions, we can come back. Alderman Edwards?
Yeah, I, I love Nancy in the library. Nobody defended the library more than Nancy, and nobody pounded on my desk more than Nancy. Nobody called me up on the phone more than Nancy. Nancy was in the office every other day, in fact, she was in so much that I went over to her office, and she said, this is the first time I've seen a mayor in a long time. So, Nancy thinks outside the box, one of the things that she talked about was maybe she could get the mobile book van back up and running, and they could find facilities around the city to make it easier for our senior citizens. So, I remember Nancy and her staff thinking outside the box, and thinking of things that they could and couldn't do to, to bring books to our citizens, and, and it, it came to the decision that we were gonna have to make some tough decisions. And it was really tough, when I'd look at Nancy and say, we're gonna close, we knew the north branch was closed, but the decision came down by the mayor's office with me, that we were gonna close the west branch. And Nancy did everything she could do to keep that thing open, her and her staff worked overtime to come up with ideas and plans and thoughts. Nancy's one of the directors that actually knows what she's doing over there, and for us to sit here and say that she doesn't, I'm somewhat offended, because Nancy, I saw you in action, and you did a great job.
I appreciate it.
So, I, I think Nancy is put in a, a tough, tough spot, because nobody thinks of the library. And, and, and not Nancy, but I closed the west branch, and I closed Sunday days over to the objections of Nancy, because I knew the limited staff we have. And unless we could come up with more staff, because she laid this out three years ago, three and a half years ago, that this is what we needed to do, this is no secret, that in order to go beyond what she's doing, she's gonna need more people. More people means not only salaries, but means benefits, means working's comp, means insurance, it's not just a dollar amount for the, for the salary, but it's beyond that. And that's why the dollar amount grows. If we just say we're gonna spend $35,000, everybody takes it times three and they move on. That's not the way it works. We have benefits, we have sick time, we have vacation time that has to be covered, so it is a rotation. And Nancy sat down with me and laid all that out, and that's when the decision was made that we can't do without more people, and we didn't hire any more people, so we cut it back. Now, she's even expanded it four hours, and people are mad at her. I commend you, Nancy, for doing a great job.
Thank you.
And I, maybe the better way to say it is, being offered more options. For example, what would it cost just to have gone one more hour on each of three nights, and forget about Thursday night, you know, it, 'cause maybe that doesn't get to a tipping point on employees. And again, I think that closing the Sagamon Room in the evening is a natural option to consider. There's no, I think we, you know, it's not an expansion of a program when we're talking about the current library, we're talking about restoring a fraction of what used to be there. We're talking about restoring, we're not talking about bringing back the branch libraries all those hours, or even the full complement of hours that used to be at the, at the main library, we're just talking about restoring something that was there, so, thanks for living through the tough times.
Well, thank you, and I, I'm sorry that we, as I said, I'm perhaps getting a little emotional this evening, but there are certainly other options that could be looked at, I don't, I would not even presume to begin tonight to say, well, we could do X, Y, or Z, because I think that, before we say anything about any other options, I would really need to go back and with my little calculator and figure them out, but yes, I, I am, you're right, Alderman McMiniman, we, there are other options.
Okay, so we've got a.
Chairman, I've got a question for Nancy. With regard to the overtime, can you direct your staff that they have to work overtime, or is that just they voluntarily, if they, if they agree to do it, they, they do it, they don't have to do it?
No, we can, we can impose overtime, if we need it to.
So, you could, theoretically, you could keep the library open these extra hours through adding to the overtime budget, but you believe that it wouldn't be fair to your employees to put all this additional, even over and above what they're already doing, putting even more overtime on it?
Yes, I think, you know, there's, every week, there's perhaps some overtime due to an illness or whatever, and, but I think to do it regularly for long-term would probably not be the best solution.
And it seems like, maybe if you hired only one employee, or maybe two employees, you spread overtime over more employees, then maybe it'd be less, you know, less painful for all the employees.
And, and that's another option, as I just said, perhaps that's something that we should have looked at and did not, so, that's something we can certainly explore.
Thanks.
Thank you very much, Director Huntley. We've got a motion on the floor to increase the funding for the library by $267,790. Any further discussion, if not, we're ready to vote.
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead, Alderman Simpson.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
In light of Director Huntley's last statement, you know, I, I, I don't know that I want to present this amount of money in this amendment. Again, I'm getting conflicting information from her, and she's saying now that, that she can look at and determine the, how many additional staff she could work with, that's the issue, that's what we need to be looking at, not necessarily the option that Mr. McCarty presented.
We've got Alderman Thailand wishes to make a comment, Alderman Simpson?
I just spoke with Joe Davis, and I also spoke with Phil McCarty. One of the things that we can do, and this has created a lot of discussion about the library, I think it's shown a lot of passion for it, from Alderman Simpson, from Alderman Edwards, from Alderman McMiniman, from the director herself, and the employees that were here earlier. One of the suggestions that has come from the off-table discussion is that we can always come back with a supplemental ordinance after the budget is passed, since we now know there are some other options. I know that some people are looking at trying to extend the hours, some people are looking at overtime, some people are looking at hiring. One of the things I was looking for was just getting some additional help at the library now with the hours and staff that they have. I was looking at trying to get a librarian one for half the year, to start on September 1st, after the construction was done on the second floor, to try to ease some of the trouble that they're having now. So, I think there's a lot of things going on, maybe we should move this discussion off the table, get a more open view of the different options available, instead of trying to push it through here, you know, because now, as Alderman Simpson pointed out, there's different information coming out, because people are answering the que, you know, I know for a fact that some of the questions I asked, I got one answer, but when I rephrased the question a different way, it was a different possible answer. And maybe that's what's going on here, is that we just got, you know, people answered questions specifically related to what was being looked at, instead of looking at all the options. And maybe we should just move this discussion forward down the line and come back with a supplemental appropriation later.
We've still got a motion and a second on the floor, so if, if we can either withdraw that motion or vote the motion, and then come back to Alderman Thailand's idea.
Mr. Chair?
Alderman Simpson?
In light of all this new discussion, at least, I withdraw my motion.
So, we've got a withdrawn motion, does anyone wish to make a, a replacement motion?
It dies, it'll just sit there.
Okay.
I just, I would just like to point out that I would like to continue this discussion later, and continue to have the, the budget, the budget staff and Director, Director Huntley involved in trying to come up with some options for the different things that the Alderman have discussed.
Okay. Then we're ready to move on to what has previously been identified as amendment number four, does.
And then, Mr. Chair, this is a final comment.
Go ahead.
All I, all I want to see, and I believe that the, the citizens of free people want to see, those that, that need the library, they just want to see hours extended. So, however we get there, we just need to get there.
Okay, so, thank you, Alderman Simpson. Does anyone wish to make a motion on what's been identified as amendment number four?
Some of.
Second. And can someone explain amendment number four?
This amendment will provide funding, will provide the city's portion, one-third of the funding for the minority participation plan with Hanson Engineering that is in conjunction with the, the.
The railroad.
No.
It was the intern, if you had a case.
Right, but the project that we have with the city.
The minority participation?
Right, but I was trying to think of a, this is a long night.
So, did the funding get left out of this in the budget that's presented when we went through budget hearings?
This, actually, if I might just, she's right, if I can just latch on to the end of her comments. It is an addition of $20,000 for the city portion, but it also, it adds budgetary authority to spend a total of $60,000. The city will be the one overseeing or administering this money. We have already received the portion from Hanson, we will receive $20,000 from the county, which is what you see in the first line of that amendment, and then we will be spending a total of $60,000, which is inclusive of our portion, which is the last couple of expense, or that last expense line that you see in the amendment. So, we're collecting 40 from others and using that, and that's the first two revenue lines, and then we have the total of $60,000 expense, which you see on the expense line in your amendment.
And this is the minority participation plan that the council approved several months ago.
Right, it was in the newspaper and, and all of that, yes.
And that was the one, there was a press conference with Senator Durbin?
Yes.
So, is there a, a motion from Alderman Turner?
Second.
Is there a second? Okay, there's a second?
There was already a second by then.
All right, I would draw that, my second, second.
Okay. So, any further discussion, all those in favor of the motion, vote your machine.
Alderman Simpson? Are you there?
I'm sorry, I was on mute, yes.
Do you wish to vote on the amendment number four?
I do.
And you wish to vote in what manner?
Yes, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Okay. I've got an amendment number five to make on the supplemental, on the, excuse me, on the appropriation ordinance. This would add, and I, I had a handout to give everyone, it looks like I misplaced it, but I'll just, it's very simple, I'll read it, this would, to the appropriation ordinance itself, it would add a section 10.1, and you've received this language in the last couple of days, it basically says, "Any across-the-board pay increases for non-union personnel shall be effective only after explicit ordinance action by the city council, setting forth the percentage of pay increase and the effective date of the pay increase." And Madam Clerk, I can give you the, the language?
I got it.
You got it, okay, thank you.
Just a, a question for the Corporation Council, and I'm not commenting on the, the amendment one way or the other, the, the question is, is that can we do a verbal amendment like that onto the appropriations bill, or is this limited to line item changes for the appropriation? Does that need to be its own ordinance?
Well, this, this is the first time, in my experience, I've, I've seen an attempt to amend an appropriation ordinance by the enactment of a substantive permanent change to the city code.
Excuse me, city, I've, I've revised it to take out new city code language, this would not amend the city code, this just provides operative language for this current fiscal year that requires the council to take a vote before we increase the, the across-the-board pay levels for all our non-union employees. And I would like to come back later on and do an ordinance that focuses on a permanent change to our city code, but this, this change here, as I read it, does not mention any new code language, it just provides an additional paragraph. new code language, it just provides an additional paragraph to the appropriation ordinance itself. I'll read it one more time, since maybe you didn't catch it. It just says, it adds a new Section 10.1, and it says, "Any across-the-board pay increases for non-union personnel shall be effective only after explicit ordinance action by the City Council setting forth the percentage of pay increase and the effective date of the pay increase." Just giving instruction to what, how we're supposed to implement the appropriation. There's lots of instructions in that appropriation ordinance as it exists, there's instructions to Director McCarty, there's instructions to various persons, and this is an instruction to the City Council and the mayor to set forth, we've got the money in the budget to pay additional across-the-board pay levels for our city employees that are non-union. This would require the City Council to give the effective date and the exact percentage increase.
Just a friendly, you've made it Section 10.1?
That's correct.
I, just a friendly suggestion, I suggest you maybe make it, uh...
I put 10.1, so we don't, do not have to amend Section 11, Alderman Cameron.
Right, but I mean, it's, the Section 10 is the ordinance shall become effective immediately. Section 9 is the city clerk is directed to publish this in Pampa form, and Section 8 is the appropriation ordinance is adopted pursuant to permissible code, so I'd...
Okay, I understand what you're saying.
Maybe make it 7.1 or something.
Or 9.1.
Normally appropriation ordinances are not also action ordinances, of course, there are several components to the ultimate budget system, there's the levy, where we ask the taxpayer, or we tell the, excuse me, the county clerk what she's supposed to receive from taxpayers when they pay their property taxes, there's other things, but ordinances just say, this is the amount of money, and these are the line items that we are reserving for these amounts. They don't compel action one way or the other.
Well, excuse me, they do, look at Section 5, look at Section, Section 1. There's all kinds of actions that can be asked of our various departments and employees. It's not just sitting aside monies.
Uh, Mr. Chair, was that, was there a response from Corporation Council?
That's correct.
I'm sorry?
Uh, Corporation Council made some comments about...
Okay, may I ask, may I ask a question of Corporation Council? There's a lot of paper ruffling going on, so I didn't really hear exactly what they said, but in your estimation, this amendment is not necessary?
I'm saying normally this is a type of action that isn't addressed by an appropriation ordinance.
Yeah, that doesn't make it impermissible.
The, the more substantive issue is, and I haven't had a chance to look at it because of the time within which it was submitted, is whether or not this violates the consent decree and the separation of powers between the executive and the legislative branch. This basically is saying the executive will not be authorized to institute any pay increases for non-union personnel, except upon the explicit vote of the City Council. I can't at this point say that this is legally sufficient, because this gets again into the tug-of-war between the executive and the legislative.
Chairman, I think we need a motion and a second. We're discussing something that we don't have a motion, do we have a motion for a second?
No, we do not, this...
Don't we need a, somebody to make a motion on this and a second for discussion?
So I'm making the motion, is there a second on the motion? That the pay raise, basically this is saying pay raises to non-union city employees require an ordinance, it requires conscious voting by this body, rather than by executive order. Historically, the mayor decides how much pay increase he wants to give, and the timing of that pay increase for across-the-board. And, um, by the way, Treasurer Langfeller's not here tonight, he was going to ask his father, back when in the day, they used to pass an ordinance for non-union pay increases, and I believe he'll offer that opinion tomorrow night, to see if there's a practice of doing so in the past, but, you know, I'll go by whatever the council, I know what I think we ought to do, that we should be accountable to the voters when we make a $1.2 million spending decision, because that's what this comes to. We got 400 employees that are non-union, and when we raise their, their, so that's $40 million payroll, roughly, by 3%, that's a $1.2 million spending decision. Now, we can pretend like we're not responsible for that, and just say, let the mayor decide to do it at his discretion, or we can be responsible. That's the way I look at it, and you can disagree if you want, but that's the way I see it.
May, may I ask a quick question, Chairman?
Director McCarty?
Thank you. The $1.2 million, we don't have a second yet, so I guess I could wait to see if there's a second for discussion, never mind.
Okay, if there's no second, let's move on. So we've made amendments to the appropriations ordinance, and now comes time to vote on the, the appropriation ordinance. Is any discussion on the ordinance as a whole, before we take the vote?
Just a reminder, for, this is a motion for debate, as amended, correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
I have another ordinance or amendment that was on my desk, Amendment Number One, perhaps that's for the actual committee meeting.
I think it's...
Yeah, an Order 69, which is the next one.
Okay, if there's no further discussion, then we're going to vote on the, the as amended appropriation ordinance.
This is to put it on debate agenda.
To put it on the debate agenda.
Yes.
You're voting yes?
Yes.
9-1, Alderman.
Okay. Moving to, are you ready, Madam Clerk, to read the next ordinance?
2014-069 is an ordinance approving salary increases in excess of 5% during a 12-month period for certain employees in the Office of Corporation Counsel.
Move to debate.
Second.
There's a motion and a second for debate, any discussion or amendments?
Uh, yes. Some conversation that I had today with Corporation Counsel, I was just wanting to get some clarification on why this ordinance doesn't have anything on it about the, the base salary or salary ranges, and I know you explained it to me, but it might be good to have you go ahead and explain that answer again.
Well, right now, uh, you know, we do not have, as my understanding, specific ranges to salaries that attach to the position of Assistant Corporation Counsel, the way we typically do in collective bargaining agreements, or in civil service. One of the big difficulties we have is intra-office parity. These are the four attorneys with the most experience, in fact, in a couple of weeks, these will be the only remaining attorneys in my office, because we are going to be about three vacancies down, which is, means that we will be at less than 60% strength, the attorneys. If I try to hire somebody else at a competitive salary, it's going to be very difficult, because it is somewhat of an insult to these four attorneys. And unfortunately, at the rates that they are currently paid, they are well below market rates in the city of Springfield, for attorneys, because we are in competition with the state of Illinois. Whether we like to agree with that or not, whether we want to point fingers across the street and saying, well, this is what the assistant state's attorneys are paid, we're not competing with the state's attorney's office, we're competing with the state of Illinois, and we're, we're also competing with private practice law firms. The, this is a continuation of what John Malek started about two and a half months ago. When I came on, I was amazed at the level of compensation of these attorneys, based on what the city of Spring, uh, what the city of Bloomington pays their attorneys. And today I have sent you two different emails regarding what the state of Illinois pays their attorneys, inexperienced attorneys who are represented by AFSCME, and that's basically most of the attorneys who don't work for the Attorney General's office, because they're exempt from collective bargaining. With no experience at all, they're, they're hired at $51,500.
Was that 51,000?
51,000, correct. If they have experience, they're eligible to start at a pay grade of 72,252, which is less than what all of the attorneys, assistant corporation councils in my office are paid. Now, you can look at the assistant state's attorneys, but the bottom line is, half of the assistant state's attorneys have been there for three years or less. Whether this is because of action of the county board, or whatever, attorneys go to the assist, to the state's attorney's office, they get some experience, and then they move on to different jobs, presumably in private practice, or with the state of Illinois that pay more.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, could I ask you a few questions?
About possible amendments, or about the issue generally?
No, to Mr. Greenberg.
Go ahead.
So you said, do you know what, there's 51,000 is the average, the starting salary for a new attorney state of Illinois?
No, it's not the average start, well, it's the minimum starting salary.
The minimum starting salary.
Minimum starting salary.
But excluding the Attorney General, what, do you know what it is at the Attorney General's office?
I don't know for sure, because there are hundreds of assistant states, excuse me, assistant attorneys general, and I don't know for sure. Now, what I can do to make an educated guess is look at the Bureau of Labor Statistics, which includes the salaries for attorneys in the city of Springfield. And they come down to, if I recall, the average is around, and I'm sorry, I'm blanking here, and I do have the, the information, just a second here. I'm sorry for the pause. The annual median wage for an attorney in the city of Bloomington, excuse me, city of Springfield, and this is two years ago, is $78,210. So presumably that is taken into account what the assistant attorneys general are paid, as well as the attorneys for the state of Illinois who are represented by AFSCME.
Now, you're the lowest-paid attorney of the assistants, is Mr. Broco, he started on January 2012, 40,314, correct?
Correct.
Was he, is he, was he fresh out of law school at that time, or did he already have some experience?
No, I believe he was fresh out of law school at that time.
So that's basically, at the Corporation Counsel's office, for an attorney with no experience, that's the starting salary, about 40,000, is that...
Yeah, it was, it was in his case, and I suspect the reason was, as I mentioned before, intra-office parity.
Okay, so, I mean, if you were going to hire a new attorney with no experience now, I mean, I know you have some, you, job announcements, we got them today for new assistants, what's, what is the salary that a new assistant you would hire today, right out of law school, would be paid?
Definitely wouldn't be 40,000, if I can help it, but the problem is, if I hire them at much beyond that, it's an ental to the attorneys who are working for me presently.
Right, for Mr. Broco, for example.
Correct.
And I noticed also, you, you even have, you know, a paralegal who's paid more than some, one of your assistant corporation councils, isn't that correct?
That's correct, we have a paralegal who's worked for the city for many years.
Yeah, even though, I know, paralegals can be very valuable. What about Mr., I know Alderman McMiniman had made a suggestion about creating classifications within the office, it sounded like a good idea to me, where you might have, you know, assistant corporation counsel, senior assistant corporation counsel, be another category, and then a seniors, I mean, maybe a deputy assistant corporation counsel, that way you could promote somebody from one class to the other, and then they could get a pay raise that would be beyond 5% without having to go to the City Council. What do you think about, I mean, for the long term, I understand that, you know, you don't want to do that right now, but implementing something like that for the long term, so we don't have a situation, or we can at least try to avoid this kind of situation from coming up again in the future.
Yeah, long term, that would be a possibility, yes. The difficulty is, in the short term, I've got four attorneys I would like to keep without having all that institutional knowledge walk out the door.
I saw Chairman, Chairman, you had an amendment, I think you prepared on this, were you planning to offer that?
Well, thank you, I think you kind of prepared well for these two amendments, because we've got a short-term problem, and we've got a long-term problem, and we need to work at both problems. We've had almost, we've had 100% turnover in our city attorney's office, except for one attorney remaining, and we can't afford any more losses, we've got to do what we can to, to keep those that we've got. The, the starting point salaries isn't so much a problem, because we can offer, if we hire someone from the private sector, whether it be two years of practice, or five years of practice, we can hire them at where they're jumping from, and even offer them something beyond, and they come to the city, and we give them a pension, we, we can recruit. But the problem is, our career attorneys, once they get hired, they need to be able to be promoted up, just like in the fire department, you start out as a, as a firefighter, then you go to engineer, then you go to captain, then you go to battalion, but we've got no career progression for our city employees. So what I've got here is two amendments. One offers the long-term view for a solution, to allow our attorneys to be promoted into positions of higher responsibility, and positions that reflect their greater experience and judgment. So Amendment Number One adds Section 1.1 to the ordinance, and it says, quote, "In accordance with City Code Section 36.38, the City Council requests the Human Resources Department to review the classified attorney position, position within the Corporation Counsel's office, and make recommendations for additions and amendments to those positions, to create more than one classification, to permit career advancement through promotion." So that's, you should all have a copy of that amendment in front of you, is there a second on that amendment?
I would second it, but would you accept, I was wondering if you would accept a friendly suggestion for changing some of the language, I would change the word request to directs, and I would split after Human Resources and the Corporation Counsel, because I think they should be working jointly on trying to come up with this.
Um, just so everybody's clear, that, that amendment amends a section of the Civil Service Commission, our, my attorneys are not in civil service, they're exempted from civil service. So the amendment is offered does not...
Okay, well then, why don't you just take, remove the code section, or...
Yeah, I wanted to make the same point, too, that the term "classification" is inappropriate, because these are not able to be classified, because they are at-will positioned outside of civil service, and that is the reason they don't have salary ranges or job grades, is to keep that at-will status, much like an appointed director position. So we may begin to muddle that status if we talk about classifications for a job that is unclassified.
I understand, what's the correct terminology to use, then?
Job title. We can create new job titles.
So then we'd say, the City Council directs the Human Resources Department to review job titles?
Which can be done. It'd just be a matter of adding new titles with a progression into our system. Because they are outside of civil service, and collective bargaining, and everything else, that drives all the other positions. It is quite easily done.
Okay, I'd like to restate the amendment to read, and offer that as an amendment, the City Council direct, thank you very much, Director. The City Council directs the Human Resources Department to review job titles within the Corporation Counsel's office, and make recommendations.
I would suggest, make recommendations for additions, additions and amendments to those titles.
Okay, I think that's implicit, because our Human Resources Director just heard what they're asking.
It's always better to say it than assume people, you know, know what you're talking about. And I would also suggest adding the Corporation Counsel to this, that the Human Resource Department and the Corporation Counsel do this, because obviously, who knows more about the way that office is run, runs than the Corporation Counsel.
Okay, so, let's try this again, the City Council directs the Human Resources Department to review job titles within and in cooperation with the Corporation Counsel's office, and make recommendations for additional titles?
Okay, I second that. Okay, I second that.
Comments on that amendment?
That I don't have a problem with. No, I don't. Thank you.
Madam Clerk, I'll review this language at the end of the meeting if you wish. Did you capture it, or do, we can go over it?
I think we can get it.
Okay.
They all got, got it on audio tape.
Okay. So, there's a first and...
Is that unclear before, that we weren't on audio tape?
I don't think so.
Okay.
There's a first and a second for the motion, all those in favor, vote your machines.
Discussion.
Okay, sorry, discussion.
So, I, just, and maybe this is a question for our Director of Human Resources, can this, can, can this already be done without, can our corporation council do this? Can't you restructure a department without city council approval? So why do we need this ordinance? Well, I've got, I've got several...
It hasn't been done forever.
That's why... I was about to, that's, I was going to ask the follow-up. Number one, I've got a couple, maybe the HR Director, Ms. Collins, can you please? So...
Yeah.
Not to lay blame on you, Kim Morris, Director, it should come from the general council, our former corporation councils asking for help.
So I, I, I guess, under this administration, when was the last time there were five percent, were there ever five percent raise given out to these four individuals?
No.
Is this the first that we've ever come up with an idea of maybe restructuring this department? Why now?
In this administration, yes.
Knowing that the crisis has existed for months, why are we just getting this now?
I, I can't really, that's not for me to answer.
The point I, John Maylich brought it up in December.
But not this restructuring and...
Right, the previous director under, and I'm guessing referring back to Mark Cullen, I don't believe Mark ever brought anything like this to the council. It was John Maylich who first brought it in December, and now Mr. Greenberg is following up on it. Is that accurate?
That is correct. And again, remember at the time that Mark Cullen brought on Jason Brokaw, for example, he was fresh out of law school, Jason accepted, and, you know, we really didn't have some of the issues that we currently are facing. It really has been one hit after another, after another, that I think has really caused this level of scrutiny at this point.
And one other thing I want to point out is, is within the last few months, two of our formerly highest-paid attorneys in the corporation council's office left. One moved to Utah, and I know that she was making in the neighborhood of seventy-eight thousand dollars, and another went to a position with the state of Illinois, and she was making, I believe, in excess of eighty thousand dollars. So this is, and I, as I say, this occurred within the last several months. So it has been, right now, we have one job position, assistant corporation counsel. That's why this has caused a problem by the operation of the ordinance, that if it's not going to a new job position, we're restricted to an increase of no more than five percent. Beyond that, we have to go to the city council. But this is comparatively recent. Our two highest-paid assistant corporation councils left to pay, to pay higher-paying jobs elsewhere, but that did not permit us to bump the remaining attorneys into higher-paying positions, because right now, we only have one position, which is assistant corporation counsel. That's why I do...
The title of senior corporation counsel has been available and used in the past. It hasn't been utilized for several years. The last time it was utilized, and not in this administration, did not come with a pay increase, and only once during the HACERA administration was it utilized with a three percent increase. But that is an option that is still currently available, is a senior corporation counsel title that is in existence and has been used in the past.
I, I know we've been here for a few hours, so I, I think I'm hearing both, so can this administration unilaterally create new positions within the corporation council office without city council approval? Why are we even discussing this here? Why shouldn't Ten Alderman take a vote on, on raising pay when the administration can simply change these job titles now internally without us? Correct?
That's correct.
That's what I thought. Thank you.
Yes, and, and I know that there has been discussions to do just that, and it was somewhat surprising to me that Alderman was bringing an amendment when I thought some of this was already...
So, I mean, I, I guess, why, why do Ten Alderman need to vote to raise the pay of attorneys when the administration can already do it, just changing the job classification?
Well, I think that they wanted to be very transparent for you all, because this had been in front of you before and didn't want it to, you know, get to lend to the transparency, that it didn't look like the administration was trying to circumvent this body and do something when the ordinance had been previously failed.
I want to interject. I really appreciate what Alderman Job is saying here, because I see it exactly the same way. And what's frustrating about this ordinance coming before us is, when new corporation council came on board, we had this very conversation, let's create some new titles, and let's not jump in and offer an ordinance to get the city council involved in this. Let's not make this another public debate. Do you remember that conversation, corporation council? And you went charging right forward with another ordinance, so we've got to have a public debate about this, instead of doing what was in, within your means to accomplish. And so, to be honest, I'm upset, because you, after my comment, you, you wrote back and said, well, I know I've got, I've got, you said about yourself, I've got concerns about changing the titles. And I said, well, I think, by email, I said, I think all your concerns can be met. And you did not answer that email, you charged forward with an ordinance, and how, now we're basically wasting our time. I agree with Alderman Job. This, we should not be micromanaging the pay levels for our attorneys when it's within the means of our directors to take care of that kind of thing.
I, I can't agree more, Alderman, but I've seen enough of the Springfield City Council to know that this is a very political body, and I did not want retaliation against my office in the future because of a perception that I was trying to make an end run around the city council. If the majority of the Aldermen have no problems with my talking with the mayor and distributing salaries and job titles in the way that I see fit, I would be thrilled. I just do not want that action to be taken as an end run around the city council.
Well, let me say this, you did an end round, around Alderman-McMiniman, because I made a suggestion to you, and then you go right forward and do what we just suggested not be accomplished.
So could I make a suggestion, we get back on track? Thank you.
So, there may be no need then?
Wait, can I, can I ask a question of the Human Resources Director? I don't know, Alderman Turner. Just, so what you're saying is, within the office right now, without any legislation by the city council, Mr. Greenberg could, on his own, create certain job titles and say, this job title has a pay classification of, you know, fifty thou...
Not a pay classification.
What?
Not a pay classification. He can have three separate and distinct job titles.
Is that authorized in, in the city code? Where does it say that, that he can have three?
Because they are at-will positions that are outside of civil service, he can set the salaries at whatever he wants.
But he can't increase the salaries more than five percent without city council authority? There's an ordinance to that effect.
Unless he changes the job classification.
Well, that's what I'm trying to get at. Can you, can she, can, are you saying, I'm trying to nail this down, are you saying that he can create job titles or job classifications at specific salary?
Not to put too fine a point on it, but I'm the one that makes legal decisions, not the, not the...
Okay, well, I'd appreciate if you would weigh in, too. I don't know. I mean, I, it seems like I'm hearing...
Sam, he said it three times, and she said it eight times.
Well, she said it, she didn't say, nobody had said it...
I have my calculator.
Nobody had said at one time that Mr. Greenberg can create job classifications at certain specific salary ranges.
He cannot create job classifications. He can create job titles, but those job titles will not have specific assigned salary ranges to them. They will still be fluid, just as the assistant corporation counsel is today, because as soon as you start attaching classifications and job grades and salary ranges, it becomes subject to coverage under civil service. These are at-will, for, for the state employees will understand this, double-exempt jobs. And if you start muddling with that status, it will erode their at-will relationship with the city.
Mr. Greenberg, is that correct? Could, is she, you're the ex, you're the lawyer, obviously, so...
Really?
Could we, could we, you know, could we create, or give you the authority to create titles within your office?
I, I believe I have that authority already.
But with specific salary ranges attached to it?
No. I'm, I don't want to agree, because I don't want to get into this problem or have a future corporation counsel get into this problem in the future.
So, I mean, it does...
I, I'm not, I'm not proposing to cause a, a new class of attorneys that are part of the Civil Service Commission. But I am proposing to create a new, if, since I'm not hearing any objections, I would be proposing to create a new series of job titles, and in consultation with the mayor, hire people at appropriate salaries for that, or transfer existing employees into those newly-created job titles.
But still, whenever you wanted to increase their salaries, you would be limited to the five percent?
In those job titles.
Yeah. I mean, even if you switch it from one title to another, you'd still be limited...
Not jumping from title to title, that's what we've been trying to...
Well, that's what I've been getting, that's what I've been, been trying to get that, whether you, the motion you're...
I'm going to take the floor, as Chairman, I think what we're saying is that if you're within a title, you're limited to five percent increase within any twelve-month period. If you move to a different job title, that five percent limit no longer exists, because it's a promotion.
Correct.
All right, that's correct, that's all I'm trying to get. All right, thank you.
So we're going to withdraw this amendment?
So withdraw the amendment, yes?
Withdraw the motion, let it die, now that we've had the discussion on the motion, on the ordinance. I'll withdraw the, the amendment, the amendment, the motion on the amendment.
Okay. Do we need the ordinance, then?
Well, I think so.
I think corporate counsel said he didn't hear any objections. Now, if somebody will withdraw the motion, we can get on with doing something else.
Who made the motion on the...
Alderman Job.
I'll withdraw. I made the motion for debate.
Yes, you did.
Because I was, and the re, I wanted to...
Why don't you withdraw the whole, the whole ordinance? That's the easiest thing to do.
Just withdraw the motion, it dies. Thank you.
Okay. So is there any further discussion?
Motion for debate is withdrawn, and now we're back to the original ordinance.
And then if there's no motion on the original ordinance, it, it remains in committee or dies?
Correct.
Yes.
Okay. Is there any motion on the, okay.
Just a point of clarification?
Yes.
Um, there's been such convoluted discussion that I'm not real sure where we are right now, but the ordinance that we were initially voting on, there, there's been no motion with now, with regard to that ordinance?
Correct. The amendment was withdrawn and the ordinance, it remains in committee as of this moment. So if there's no further discussion, we've got roughly sixteen ordinances to get through here now, and it's eight o'clock. Not to, we'll give appropriate attention to each one of these, but let's go on to the next ordinance. Madam Clerk?
Twenty-fourteen zero-seventy is an ordinance authorizing execution of a three-year agreement with USDM.net to provide advertising agency services for the Springfield Convention and Visitors Bureau in an amount of $696,000 from April one, twenty-fourteen, to March thirty-one, twenty-seventeen.
Move to consent.
Okay. There's a motion of second. Any discussion? One question, is this, do we have a continuing relationship with this entity?
Um, no, we will be changing advertising agencies. We didn't inform our... So, they are currently rebuilding the back end of our website. Oh, sorry. They are currently rebuilding the back end of our website and have done some other projects for us the last couple of years.
Okay, and this is six-hundred-and-ninety-six, spread over three years, is that comparable to our historical spending?
It is, and actually, a breakdown of that, seventy-two thousand is for the marketing and creative process, a hundred-and-fifty per year is actually for media buys, so that's the largest chunk of it, which then we get back with a marketing partnership grant from the state.
Thank you very much, Director.
And the media buys, that's where they, their buying time for us on TV or radio, so most of that money is just passed through.
Majority of it is the media buys, yes, for both convention and leisure.
All right. All those in favor of the motion to place on the consent, signal five by Saint I?
Aye.
Any against, the ayes have it?
Twenty-fourteen zero-seventy-one is an ordinance authorizing payment to Michael Newman, a police officer with the Springfield Police Department, to settle a workers' compensation claim for case number thirteen W C one-nine-two-two-zero.
Move for consent. Second.
There's a motion of second, any discussion? All those in favor, signal five by Saint I?
Aye.
Any against, the ayes have it?
Twenty-fourteen zero-seventy-two is an ordinance authorizing payment to Ronald Roy, a police officer with the Springfield Police Department, to settle a workers' compensation claim for case number thirteen W C one-oh-nine-two-seven.
Move for consent. Second.
There's a motion of second, discussion, a couple of questions on this one. The injury was December twenty, two thousand and twelve, returned to full duty November thirteen, uh, excuse me, November of two thousand and thirteen, so that's eleven months later. The question, and you can answer this now or later, corporation council, were duties performed during the eleven months between the injury and the return to full duty?
That I do not know. We typically, if, if we can, people who can't be out on the street, and I'm, I'm sorry, we're talking about the police officer here, one of the police officer claim. I know typically, the police department likes to have attorney, excuse me, police officers do light duty, partly just so they don't go stir-crazy, because most people do like to be useful. I don't know specifically whether this person did light duty or not, though. I'm getting a nod from, please.
Chief Winslow, no need to come forward, but if you could send me an email as to, you know, any more detail you wish to give on that, I'd appreciate it, whether, what, the nature of duties, and that duties were performed during the eleven months between when the injury occurred and when the return to full duty date took place. If no further discussion, all those in favor, signal five by Saint I?
Aye.
Any against? Thank you, Alderman Simpson, the ayes have it?
Twenty-fourteen zero-seventy-three is an ordinance authorizing payment to Scott Motur, a former city of Springfield firefighter, to settle workers' compensation claim, case number twelve W C three-nine-zero-nine-nine.
Move for consent. Second.
There's a motion of second to place on consent, any discussion?
Just a question, has this worker had any prior workers' comp claims against the city for, regarding injuries to his back?
Chief is coming forward, Alderman Simpson?
Not to my, not to my knowledge, sir.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Follow-up question. The write-up says that the worker, the firefighter was released with permanent restrictions that the Springfield Fire Department could not accommodate?
That's correct. We didn't have a light-duty policy until this most recently passed collective bargaining agreement, and, and the light-duty policy is only for three-hundred-and-sixty-four days.
So does this firefighter continue on the force?
No, he's off on duty-related disability pension.
That's a permanent status, then?
That's correct.
Thank you. All those in favor of the ordinance, signified by Saint I?
Aye.
To, to place on the consent agenda?
Twenty-fourteen zero-seventy-four is an ordinance authorizing payment to John Watts, an Office of Public Utility employee, for settlement of workers' compensation claims for case numbers, zero-seven W C eight-three-two-eight, zero-seven W C eight-three-two-nine, ten W C two-one-seven-nine-oh, ten W C four-seven-nine-five-four, eleven W C three-eight-one-two, eleven W C five-four-four-eight, and twelve W C three-four-four-nine-six.
Move for consent.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion of second, any discussion?
Questions?
Mr. Greenberg, what can you, without violating the patients' rights, what can you explain to us about this? Because it just doesn't make a whole lot of sense to me. I read it several times, and I don't know what you can explain to us without us having to go into executive session.
And that's, and that's true. We did discuss this, I believe, briefly last, it seems like I have recalled discussing this. This does resolve several, several pending workers' compensation cases. It is on advice of outside counsel. I would be able to speak more in enclosed session. There are reasons for this recommendation, but I don't want to talk about those publicly.
Chairman, I'll withdraw my motion for consent, make a motion to put on a debate.
And I'll second, and then we could plan on maybe having executive session next Tuesday.
And I'll second, and then we could plan on maybe having executive session next Tuesday before we vote on it. All right.
Okay. Chairman, Alderman Kim, a quick question. I think maybe you can't open, answer this one in open session. Is this employee back at working for CWLP now?
I do not think so.
Because he's determined he's no...
He doesn't work for CWLP.
Or what, says he was with the Office of Public Utilities.
Oh, Public Utilities.
Oh, yeah. All right, well, you let us know when we have, we discuss it next week. That's fine. Thanks.
Okay, we can go into that in the executive session next week. Okay. So, we're going to have a vote on the motion to place on the debate agenda. All those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any against? The ayes have it?
2014-075 is an ordinance authorizing payment to Greg Bandy, an Office of Public Utility employee, to settle worker's compensation claims for case numbers 11WC-45858 and 12WC-18636.
Move for debate.
Second.
There's a motion for debate and a second. Any discussion?
Nothing I can ask now.
All those in favor of the motion to place on debate, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any against? The ayes have it?
2014-076 is a resolution for temporary closure of a portion of Illinois State Route 97 and 125 for the St. Patrick State Parade on March 15, 2014.
Move for consent.
Second.
There's a motion, a second, for consent. Any discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any against? The ayes have it?
2014-077 is an ordinance authorizing payment in the amount of $3,212,000 to the Energy Authority Incorporated for resource management and transmission scheduled fees for fiscal year 2015 for the Electric Division of the Office of Public Utilities.
Move for consent.
Second.
First and a second for consent. Any discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any against? The ayes have it?
2014-078 is an ordinance authorizing additional funding in the amount of $380,000 under proposal number UE-1302 with NALCO Company for a total amount payable of $1,758,200.
Move to consent.
Second.
Motion, a second, for consent. Any discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Ayes have it?
2014-079 is an ordinance authorizing the execution of a letter offer for extension, approving a one-year contract extension and authorizing additional funding in an amount not to exceed $348,622 under contract UW-100192 with HD Supply Water Works Limited for the purchase of fire hydrants for a total amount payable of $1,743,110 under said contract for the Water Division.
Move for consent.
Second.
First and a second for consent. Any discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any against? The ayes have it?
2014-080 is an ordinance accepting proposal UE-1423 with Professional Adjustment Bureau of Mid-America Incorporated for third-party collection fees for past due utility accounts in an amount not to exceed $201,000.
Move for debate.
Second.
There's a motion for debate. Any discussion?
Do we, do we bid this out?
It was bid.
There were 12 bidders, it says.
Oh, I'm sorry. I missed that. Thank you. I got it. It was an RFP, Alderman, not a bid, not a sealed bid. It's an RFP. Thank you.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion to place on debate, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any against? The ayes have it?
2014-081 is an ordinance approving and authorizing the execution of an amendment to two existing farm leases with Leader Brand Brothers Incorporated and Kenneth Edwards for the Water Division.
Move for consent.
Second.
Motion, a second, for consent. Any discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
The ayes have it?
2014-082 is an ordinance authorizing execution of an agreement with the State of Illinois Department of Natural Resources for the Silver Road Drive Sewer Repair Project for the Office of Public Works.
Move for consent.
Second.
There's a motion, a second. Discussion. Where is Silver Road Drive located?
It's up in West Washington.
West Washington. How far, West Washington?
You go under the overpass, that red road.
Beyond Route 4?
Go past Luther School. It's down there about five blocks.
Thank you. There's a motion, a second, to place on consent. All those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any against? The ayes have it?
2014-083 is an ordinance authorizing the execution of an agreement with and payment in the amount of $46,313.95 to the State of Illinois Department of Transportation for traffic signal modernization on Wabash Avenue from Cookie Mill to Park Street for the Office of Public Works.
Move for consent.
Second.
Motion, a second, for consent. Any discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any against? The ayes have it?
2014-084 is a resolution notifying the State of Illinois Department of Transportation that motor fuel tax funds in the amount of $46,313.95 may be used for traffic signal modernization on Wabash Avenue from Cookie Mill to Park Street for the Office of Public Works.
Move for consent.
Second.
Motion, a second, for consent. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any against? The ayes have it?
2014-085 is an ordinance amending the Springfield City Code of Ordinances 1988 as amended pertaining to appointment of persons subordinate to the director of a department or other body.
Mr. Chair, I would work on an amendment to this, and I'd just like to leave it in committee, and then if I have it ready by the council meeting, we'll pull it out then.
Okay. If there's no motions, then we'll move on to the next ordinance.
2014-086 is an ordinance reestablishing the intent of the city to construct a supplemental water supply.
Move for consent.
Second.
There's a motion, a second, for consent. There's a friendly amendment on this ordinance. You should have it somewhere on your desk. Basically, it says, "A new section 1.1, City Water, Light, and Power shall prepare a written report to the council at least every six months summarizing all activity relative to the development of the Lake Springfield 2 project." Is there a motion or a second?
If you'll add with cost to that.
With cost, with, and cost of development during the six months.
Is there a motion?
Madam Clerk, do you have the, there's a, I'm going to restate the original amendment, but we word differently. It says, "Section 1.1, City Water, Light, and Power shall prepare a written report to council at least every six months summarizing all activity relative to development with cost of the Lake Springfield 2 project."
Is that a motion?
That's a motion, second. Any discussion?
This is on the amendment?
Yes.
That's correct. A vote on the amendment, a voice vote on the amendment. All those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any against? The ayes have it. So, now, any discussion on the amended ordinance?
Yes. I don't think something, as, this is a major, major decision for the city of Springfield, whether to build Lake 2. I don't think something like that should be on the consent agenda. So, I'm going to vote no on putting it on the consent agenda.
Who placed it on the consent?
That's the motion.
Would you allow it to come up, consent, so it goes on debate?
That's fine.
There's a withdrawal for consent?
I'll withdraw the motion for consent and create a motion for debate as amended.
Second.
Okay, so there's a fresh motion to place on a debate agenda and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any against? The ayes have it? Okay, we've reached the end of the ordinances. We're at item number seven on the agenda. Any unfinished business? Any new business? Any citizen request to address the committee?
I'd like to recognize one.
Mr. Witkowski?
Thank you, Alderman. I know it's been a long night. I'll try to be brief.
Your address, sir, please?
Yeah. My name is Josh Witkowski, 2500 West Lawrence Avenue. Also employed as an engineer technician with City Water, Light, and Power here in Springfield. I'm here tonight to talk about Illinois Policy Institute. The group that was here tonight talked about pension reform as regards to the city of Springfield. I think there's some important points to be made here. Illinois Policy Institute claims to be a think tank. Reality is, they are a partisan lobbying group. In 2013, they had 10 lobbyists registered, including many that doubled as analysts, including the gentleman that spoke here tonight. That was a lobbyist. That was not an analyst that came and spoke to this council. 2014 saw them spin off their lobbying group into something called Illinois Policy Action. But the head of the Illinois Policy Institute says, "These two groups are the same. They have the same board of directors, the same staff, the same facilities, including the same lobbyists." The gentleman that spoke here tonight was a lobbyist, not an analyst. My question is, why are they trying to hide what they actually are? What is IPI lobby for? One of their major goals is to convert public pensions into 401K systems. In fact, John Tillman, who is the head of the IPI, states in an interview, "One of his major goals is to repeal bloated public employee salaries and pensions." Given the remarks that we've heard from the Alderman Ward 7, I can see why this group was invited here tonight to speak. They seem to share the same questionable goals. According to an article from the Guardian newspaper, "The Illinois Policy Institute attempted to get a grant from a Koch Brothers-backed group to lobby the city of Chicago to change their pensions to 401K." They are also authors of House Bill 3303, which would have changed state pensions into 401K. Now, they're here telling the city of Springfield the same thing. As Alderman Turner noted, every one of their studies comes to the same conclusion: turn us over to 401K. Coincidentally, this also matches the goals of Republican candidate for Governor Bruce Rauner. Bruce Rauner donated $500,000 to the Illinois Policy Institute, and his current Chair of Finance, Elizabeth Christie, is also an Illinois Policy Institute board member. Do they still seem nonpartisan to you folks after hearing this? As for their studies, notice, this study did not see the light of day till tonight. It was not put out for public review prior to day. Was given to Alderman McMiniman on Friday, but he was told to keep it embargoed according to public comments that were made on the radio. Maybe that's because when IPI studies are exposed to public scrutiny, they tend not to add up. In May 2012, they were proven wrong regarding teacher pensions and local contribution impacts. December 2013, they were shown to have misled the public regarding the state's new pension law. Coincidentally, both of those were done by analysts who were actually registered lobbyists, much like tonight. And much like tonight, after a few minutes of public airing, you were able to see how their conclusions were misguided and not supported by data. I congratulate Alderman Lesko, Alderman Turner, and Budget Director McCarthy for their ability to see that very quickly. Bottom line is, the IPI is puppet, they're puppets. For the ultra wealthy, they have a problem with facts. In fact, one might say they are the Pinocchios of the 1%, which brings me to my other question. Why were they brought here tonight? I believe the IPI was brought here tonight because of a continuing line of dialogue that goes against public employee pensions and salaries by one particular alderman here. I will point out that two weeks ago, that alderman said on air that he had heard...
Josh, I need to caution you. We cannot attack one alderman in our comments.
I'm, I'm going to point out a public statement that was made. With regards to public employee pensions, it was stated that this alderman had heard from six employees, but not from any taxpayers. I am here as an employee of the city of Springfield to state that I am also a taxpayer of the city of Springfield. And when these decisions are made, it sickens me to see a registered lobbying agent of a special interest group get more public access to this council on this issue than any other average citizen that is an actual citizen of the city. There's a saying, "Put up or shut up." I'm going to say, nobody in Springfield's ever heard of a politician shutting up. So, I'm going to ask that somebody puts up. I have heard about our pensions for the last three years. My coworkers tell me about how much stress it is to hear their pensions constantly in jeopardy by the remarks of a few people. I'm going to ask that somebody puts up. Come forward with an actual budget plan that shows what they want to do to solve this supposed crisis. I'm going to echo the remarks of Alderman Turner and the remarks of Mayor Houston from several months ago. It is time for somebody to actually put forth a plan if this is such a crisis that has been beaten to death for the last three years. I'm going to say, there were votes against employee contracts and votes against infrastructure done in the name of pensions. It's time to see something done on pensions if it is this bad. The last thing I'm going to say, there's been a stat going around stating that the average median Springfield household makes $50,000 versus $70,000 for a public employee. My salary's below the average Springfield median. But I'm also going to point out, the city of Springfield does not employ any service sector workers. We do not have cashiers. We do not have waitresses. We do not have a bunch of minimum wage jobs, which unfortunately, our city does have, and that drives down the median wage. If you want to look at an apples-to-apples comparison, I believe Corporation Council pointed out what attorneys are presently making and how hard he's having keeping attorneys on staff. I know there are very similar issues throughout numerous departments in this city, and it is something that we should keep an eye on rather than constantly saying how public employees are well overpaid. I'd also point out, private sector doesn't have police fire. There's not, it's not an apples-to-apples comparison, and that's something that needs to be addressed. Like I said, I don't like the fact, a registered lobbying agent from one particular partisan group had more access up here tonight than an average citizen. And that's something that I'm going to ask this council to look at very hard before they go back to that same group again. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Witkowski. Since, and this isn't directed to you, it's directed to the other aldermen here and to the public and to the media and the reporters that are here. Mr. Witkowski indicated it's very important to identify who's who and what they represent. So, I just want you to know that Mr. Witkowski was the campaign, political campaign manager for the other alderman, a candidate that I defeated in the last election. And so, that just has to be pointed out, and I hope you all understand the circumstances. As far as Illinois Policy Institute, Illinois Policy Institute is a 501(c)(3), whereas Illinois Policy Action is a 501(c)(4), which is allowed to engage in political activity. And that's a very significant distinction that was not made by Mr. Witkowski. I do not know the status of Mr. Dubrowski, if he's a registered lobbyist or not. I intend to ask him that question. If he is not a registered lobbyist, I would expect Mr. Witkowski to offer an apology.
I can show right here that he is.
Okay. So, that's something we can all take into consideration if he's a lobbyist and take it, you know, under advisement for what it is. And the facts can speak for themselves, and we're all intelligent enough to weigh the facts and reach our conclusions. Any further citizen requests? I take it the executive session basically was on the agenda, but we're going to move that...
If necessary, we'll deal with the, it goes to the, I request it for the two workmen's comp issues, which we'll get next week.
Okay. Is there a motion to, so, a motion, second?